We'll call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of July 15th. We'll note that all city commissioners are present. City Administrator Sean Kessel is absent. He's out of town. First item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Hearing done, would there be a motion then to approve the order of business?
You move.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Next item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Hearing done, would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman, Mrs. Stookard, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move to the non timetable agenda. The first item we have there is to hear the financial report for June. Mrs. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. I would like to highlight a few items from the financial report through June. We'll begin with the general fund report. With half of the year completed, our property taxes equal $3.3 million and were 96 percent collected compared to budget. Our other taxes and fees total $175,000 and are 72 percent collected compared to budget. Our intergovernmentals, which include highway distribution tax and oil production tax, total $1.4 million and are 34 percent collected compared to budget. Our licenses, fees and services, which includes such things as building permit revenue, oil royalties and administrative fees, is 52 percent collected compared to budget. The building permit revenue is up $331,000 over last year. This category also includes our municipal court fines, which are running equal to last year. Our total general fund revenues equal $6.7 million through June and were 50 percent collected compared to budget. Our general fund expenses, our general government includes administration, court, finance and buildings and grounds and is 51 percent expended compared to budget. Our public safety, which includes police and fire, is 45 percent expended compared to budget. Our engineering and streets, which now includes community development, is 57 percent expended compared to budget. Our overage here is due to budgeted equipment purchases in our street department. And our cultural services, which includes museum and forestry, is 41 percent expended compared to budget. Our total general fund expenses equal $6.8 million through June and were 50 percent expended compared to budget. In our enterprise funds, our water and wastewater revenues equal $3.9 million through June and were 53 percent collected compared to budget. And our expenses in capital outlays total $3.9 million, which is 54 percent expended compared to budget. And the overage here is due to budgeted capital outlays. Our solid waste fund revenue is $2.2 million through June and is 57 percent collected compared to budget. And our expenses in capital outlays total $1.3 million, which is 36 percent expended compared to budget. In our sales tax report, in our 1 percent sales tax fund, we received $489,000 of revenue in June, which is up 4 percent for the year. Our 1 percent sales tax fund is broken down into three groups. The first is our 50 percent share, which is for street projects and infrastructure. In 2013, we are budgeting infrastructure projects that total $850,000, but no direct transfer to the street projects fund. The second is the 20 percent share, which is for job creation and senior programs. This segment funds Stark Development, elder care and RSVP, along with the senior citizen and Southwest Regional Grant programs. And our expenses here are $474,000 through June. The third segment is the 30 percent share, which is set aside for capital improvements. The items here include $50,000 as a portion of the final BAC pledge payment, with a remainder in the hospitality tax. We have budgeted the animal shelter, trails construction and parks and rec improvements. In our half percent sales tax, we received $245,000 of revenue in June, which is also up 4 percent for the year. We are budgeting $4 million towards the public works building construction in 2013. In our hospitality tax, we received $70,000 of revenue in June, which is down 15 percent over last year. Our expenses include $1 million for the final BAC pledge payment, $50,000 for the Stark County Veterans Memorial and $37,000 for the environmental assessment at the airport to upgrade the jet service. Our occupancy tax revenues total $40,000 in June, which is down 40 percent over last year. Our expenses include $162,000 paid to the CBB for their subsidy, $60,000 for the special events grant and a $5,000 subsidy to the Rough Rider Commission. The street projects report, we received $225,000 in revenue and we have expended $546,000 towards those projects through June. And in our development impact fee program, this program has a balance of $95,000 at the end of June. Those are some of the highlights of the financial statements. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Johnson? The building construction fund shows a negative of $5.2 million. How are you going to bring that into balance?
We do have two requests for state grant monies, $2.9 million for the water reclamation facility and $2.9 million for the public works building. And then we will also be making a request to the SRF for the water reclamation facility as well.
I noticed water revenues are down about $700,000 from last year. Operating expenses down $450,000. I assume that those are industrial sales that are down and the 450 would be the cost of the raw water or the water that we would have sold, so.
That's correct.
Does, you know, do we see that trend continuing right now?
We did budget for less sales this year and we are still considerably over our budget number, but we do expect that we will see it decline.
Okay. Yeah, I couldn't remember, are we doing a chip seal project this year? Mr. Zarrah?
It's still planned, working on the agreement with the engineer, but yes, I'd like to get it out soon.
Do you have a sense of how large a dollar wise that project will be?
We're looking at about $800,000 for a seal coat project.
Okay. And what area of town is that likely to be in?
We have, it's a variety. There's, I guess it's.
Scattered around, not one section, one, okay, not one block.
There's quite a bit on the south side of town and then scattered throughout town.
Any other comments or questions for Mrs. Johnson?
I'll move, we approve the report.
Sir, a second.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Altman, Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Item B is a memorandum of understanding regarding the joint pumping facility. This would be between the city and the state water commission. Mr. Coling, are you introducing this?
Yes, I am, Mr. President. Mr. President, Commissioners, this memorandum of understanding documents an agreement between the city, Southwest Water Authority and the state water commission regarding water treatment within the city and within much of Southwest North Dakota. Under this MOU, we would proceed to negotiate with Southwest Water to amend the current agreement that we have with Southwest Water, which provides for the distribution of water and the treatment of water within the city of Dickinson in Southwest North Dakota. Under this agreement, we, as a city, would convey the existing water treatment plant to the state water commission and then they would own and operate that facility. But we would also be conveying to the state water commission an additional approximately four acre parcel of property on which Southwest Water and the state water commission intend to construct a new water treatment facility. Also with the new water treatment facility, we would also be constructing the joint finished water pumping station, which is required in order to get the treated water into the city system and into the rest of what Southwest Water serves. And the costs of that facility would be shared between Southwest Water and the city of Dickinson. That joint finished water pumping facility is currently under design and I believe they intend to go to construction on that within the relatively near future. I'd like to thank the state water commission and Southwest Water Authority for their assistance in putting this MOU together. I believe we have a document that the city is comfortable with, as well as the state agencies and city staff would recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coling. You've heard his report and recommendation. Any questions or comments from commissioners?
I would have only one. I see in the, in the wordage about the transfer of the water treatment plant that there's a reverter clause, so that will come back to us. I assume that's, that the scenario that might be envisioned is if the water, Southwest Water would build a treatment plant in some other location or something, we would have that option.
That's correct, Commissioner Jackson. We don't anticipate that that is actually going to happen, but in the event that Southwest Water does not use the facility for water treatment plant, we'd like to have the city have the ability to retain that property in case they don't need it or use it.
That's, that's all I was wondering. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Would there be a motion regarding the approval or disapproval of the memorandum of understanding?
I'll move, we approve the MOU.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman, Mrs. Stookard, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Item C involves the construction of a road, 29th Avenue East. Mr. Watson, is this your item to introduce? No?
Mr. President, I'll.
You're doing this one too?
Take a stab at this one as well. Mr. President, Commissioners, this agreement pertains to the construction of 29th Avenue East. This is the platted road in between Tiger Discount and Dakota Diner on the east end of the Business Loop. Essentially, this road goes north of the Business Loop and services Wesley Truck Center. And we've reached an agreement in principle with the private parties in order to have that road constructed at the cost of Wesley Truck Center and at no cost to the city of Dickinson. The private parties will take on all of the cost of designing, engineering and constructing the road under the supervision of the city engineer, so that it is built to city standards and consistent with, with the best public infrastructure. I believe that, I have a copy of the agreement, I was not able to get one into your packets prior to those going out, but we do have the agreement in principle and since we are essentially superintending an agreement between the private parties here, I would ask for your approval of this agreement. City staff could conclude this with the private parties and get this road built at no cost to the city. Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Coling, are you asking us to approve construction of the road? Or is there an actual agreement you want us to approve, even though we don't have it?
There is an agreement that will be signed between the parties and that is what we'd be asking you to approve. I understand you haven't seen that yet. It was not available to put into the packets.
How about if we approve you, you as city staff, to enter into an agreement?
I think that would be sufficient for my purposes.
Okay, if we act on that. Mr. Jackson, you were going to say something?
Timing, is that going to happen this year?
We've been in negotiations with the private landowners there for a while now and that was their intent to have this completed this year. Because we're halfway through the summer already, they're not certain at this point whether it could be done this year, but they're still hopeful that if construction conditions last into the vault, that they'll be able to get it done.
And I know there was a question about location. Is it going to follow the route of the dedicated street that's there now?
It'll follow the dedicated street now. There is some additional right of way that will be obtained from one of the private landowners in order to have that right of way for the road.
I'm assuming the maintenance will come under the city's responsibility.
Commissioner Jackson, yes, it will be a city road, so the city will be responsible for the maintenance and snow removal and those sorts of things.
Our construction inspection team will also be involved, so we'll ensure that that's constructed in accordance with the city standards.
Okay. Any other comments? So I think the motion, if you're in agreement with this, that we're looking for is a motion to authorize the city attorney to negotiate an agreement for construction of the road.
Mr. President, I'd make that motion.
Second.
The second. And by that road, we mean 29th Avenue East. So we have the motion, the second. Is there other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll go to item D. This is a purchase agreement regarding the Influent Pump Station land and since it's another legal agreement, Mr. Coling, I assume you're introducing this too?
I am, Mr. President. This proposed purchase agreement is for approximately two acre parcel on which would be located an Influent Pump Station in order to service the new wastewater treatment facility. Our wastewater consultant, Apex, has been involved in this and has negotiated with the land owner in order to acquire this land. And the cost to acquire the land would be just a little under $92,000. We did obtain an appraisal for that amount, which was acceptable both to the city and to the landowner. I believe that that's an adequate price for the land as it sits. This pump station is necessary in order for the wastewater treatment facility to operate the way that it is intended and we would anticipate bringing forward agreements for the construction of that Influent Pump Station within the near future. City staff would recommend approval. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Any comments or questions regarding this item? This is located approximately where?
I don't have the exact address, but it's south of the Stockyards in that area.
Kind of due west of the new mechanical plant that, or maybe even northwest a little bit.
More northwest, correct.
Anything else?
I assume, excuse me, that these dollars will be part of our overall bonding that we do for infrastructure?
I believe that they're included in our overall budget when we talk about, I can't remember if we're talking about a $40 million project or $48 million, but this pumping station is part of the overall cost and, yeah.
And I realize the station itself is, but it would seem to me we should get the land cost as part of that too.
I think the engineer had that in their estimate for the, for the station, but.
President Johnson? I believe it is part of the project itself and I think the water reclamation facility and the Influent Pump Station and the piping is estimated at about the $40 million. We, the Influent Pump Station, as I was going to have as part of my reports, is currently out, is being advertised in August 6th. We will know what that construction cost will be.
So that's an August 6th bid, huh?
Correct.
Well, I'll move that we approve the purchase agreement.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman, Mrs. Stookard, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Item E is a liquor license for the Home State Lounge Operations. This is a motel. Mr. Coling, are you introducing this also?
I am, Mr. President. This is a liquor license application from Home State Lounge Operations. The police department, as is our typical practice, did a criminal history background check in order to verify that the individual is involved in this. Liquor license, we're entitled to the license and we're not restricted by any of our ordinances. The criminal background check came back clear and there appears to be no reason to deny the application and city staff would recommend approval.
They meet the minimum room number, so they, for the license?
They do, yes.
Okay. Okay, you've heard Mr. Coling's introduction. Any comments or questions? Would there be a motion regarding this request?
I'll make a motion to approve the license for the Home State.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item F, Dickinson Development Group Downtown Agreement. Mr. Coling, I assume again, since it's an agreement, you're introducing this item.
I am, Mr. President. This agreement is an agreement between the city of Dickinson and Dickinson Downtown Group. Dickinson Downtown Group is the entity that the city selected in order to develop the city's downtown plan. The material terms of the agreement are that the Dickinson Downtown Group will do essentially a planning study or a proposal for development of several lots within the downtown and provide the city with plans and schematics for those sorts of development projects. As part of this agreement, the city would make available for DDG's consideration, a couple of downtown lots that are currently being used as parking lots, for their consideration as to whether or not those might be better to use for retail structures or office buildings or something that might provide a better value-added service for the downtown area other than parking. The cost of this agreement is $49,000, excuse me, $49,750 and city staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Again, you've heard his introduction. Are there comments or questions regarding this agreement?
Mr. President, just to correct, it's the Dickinson Development Group, DDG.
Okay.
And I would move to approve the agreement.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Well, hearing done, then we'll vote. Mrs., or Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll go to reports and do we have an HR report?
Mr. President, the city's human resources coordinator, Ms. Nomenoch, was not able to be here, but I can make some brief comments to you on the hiring journal. The hiring process for the city continues to, to be somewhat of a struggle. We have several positions for which we're getting great applications and great applicants. Those tend to be administrative assistant positions and those sorts of more clerical or office positions. We've had some fairly good success hiring those types of positions. There are other positions within the city that we face a real struggle on, including our operator positions, solid waste operators, street operators, all of our public works operator positions. We're having trouble getting any applicants at all at this point. We may get one or two applicants when we open those positions, but have not had any success on hiring at this point. We also continue to have, I believe, three or four police officer positions, entry level positions open, that we have not been able to fill at this point either. Ms. Nomenoch is traveling to Montana to do some recruiting for the city, both for operator positions and for some of the public safety positions, so we hope to have some success with her recruitment efforts there. But those positions continue to be a struggle for us to recruit applicants.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Comments or questions regarding, I guess, our hiring efforts?
Is it the salary versus the cost of living?
I think that's, Commissioner Stookard, I think that's the, the principal complaint or the information that we've got from applicants. It's, it's very difficult to compete with oilfield wages, particularly for CDL licensed people. It's just very difficult to compete with that wage environment.
I hear that a lot.
Have we heard anything on the assistant engineering position?
We have not. We were supposed to receive some news today, however, I have not been privy to any such information.
Anything else on HR?
No, Mr. President.
Chief Sevok, are you giving the safety report? We have timetables coming up in about three or four minutes. Are you going to be okay or, all right, come on up then and we'll do that?
President Johnson, Commissioners, judging from the look I received from Attorney Coling, yes, I am giving the safety report. And for the second quarter of 2013, we've had 11 incidents involving employee injuries. Four of those did require medical attention, seven did not. Brings our total for the year to 33, 14 requiring medical attention, 19 without. Now, the good news is, in the second quarter of 2013, we had less injuries as compared to the second quarter of 2012. The bad news is, total injuries for the year is almost equal to what we had in all of 2012. And the, the departmental safety representatives met at the central fire station at the end of June, which we're going to continue to do quarterly. We evaluated the safety survey that was passed out to all employees to see if there was any red flags that showed in that. And overall, we didn't score stellar points, but there weren't any red flags. We were fairly average in the responses we received from the employees. As I said in my memo to you, it did help us recognize a couple of things, though. One of those is availability of training resources, whether that may be instructors coming in for special training sessions, or whether that may be written or visual training products or assistance. We're going to have to work on, on doing a little bit better job with that. That concludes the second quarter report for safety.
But, you know, from comments that I've had from Mr. Kessel, I know you're all concerned about our safety record, that we were having more incidents than what we were accustomed to in prior years.
Yes, and, you know, I, again, it gets back to, I think, the, the dynamic of the community. We've got a lot of things going on. A lot of departments are working a little bit shorthanded and some, in some cases, working with items or things that they aren't used to working with or haven't worked with before. You know, we see a, a high incident of injuries in the solid waste department. Going back to 2009, you really see it start to climb. Well, what changed? Industrial waste. That's what changed. So I, I think, for, for as simplistic as our tracking of the injuries is, it is starting to help us recognize some trends in things, I think. And hopefully that'll help us address those, bring that information to you and help you address it also.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the chief?
Chief Sevok, is it the training for the firefighters or do you think maybe it should be the training for the employers? I know there's different types of fires now because of all the oil and.
This, this incident is for all city departments. When we bring these safety records, when we bring this safety report forward, it isn't just the fire department. This is for all city departments, so.
Chief, when I see inhalation hazard and pathogen exposure, is that more your department or is that solid waste?
Well, inhalation hazard, in fact, was solid waste. There were a couple of events that happened at the Baylor Building with the release of an unknown product and that's where you see those. Pathogen exposure, police department and some of the issues they're dealing with.
No, at the landfill, do they, do people just dump things, or, I know that they don't always stop, just from the report.
I would defer that to Mr. Zurov.
Commissioner Stuckert, I guess it depends what the construction demolition material is taken to the landfill and dumped out there, but most, and we talked about it right earlier, most of the other collection and garbage goes to the baler building where it's dumped on the floor, and then run through a baler, and then it's handled multiple time by multiple employees, loaded then into a roll-off, and then that roll-off is taken to the landfill. So the operations of the baler probably has five or six employees from the floor through the baler to the roll-off working the garbage.
And there's no telling what somebody's put in a container that we've emptied, I mean...
Correct, President Johnson. You know, there is a baler, we have safety, you know, glasses, hard hats, and trying to be as safe as we can out there, but there's unknown substances in that garbage, and when it's compressed, things happen.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we have five timetable items to go through, so we're going to move back to the timetable agenda. And the first item there is a public hearing regarding the proposed right-of-way permit ordinance, and before we open it up to public comment, I'll just ask if Attorney Coling or Engineer Watson have any introductory comments that they'd like to make. Anything from Mr. Watson?
Mr. President, I guess we could go over this all again, but I want to assure everyone that this process really is a process intended to protect the city property, and so that we'll know who's in our right-of-way and what they're doing and when they're doing it. This really takes place of some existing permits that we're issuing. So, for instance, the excavation permit within the right-of-way would be included as part of this permit, as well as the concrete permits and any paving permits, and basically, everything that's done in the right-of-way will be covered by this one permit.
Okay. Mr. Coling, anything you'd want to add?
Mr. President, the only thing that I would add is pertaining to the fee structure. If this ordinance does pass second reading and final passage, we will include a permit, a fee that would be included within the city's annual fee schedule. We intend, at this point, to make some exemptions to that for small landowners, if somebody wants to repair their sidewalk or something like that, they wouldn't have to pay the full amount of the fee. Also, there are certain franchises the city has granted for electric utilities or gas utilities to use the right-of-way for their purposes, and there would be some accommodation or waiver of fee for those sorts of franchises that routinely use the right-of-way and have a franchise to do that. Mr. Watson and I will continue to work that issue out and come up with a fee scheme that meets with public approval and your approval as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coling. At this time, we'll declare the public hearing open regarding this proposed ordinance. If you'd like to comment, just come to the podium now, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Good evening. My name's Chuck Olson, 841 Green Street. In reviewing of this, the general provisions in this, it seems like these provisions have been pardoned upon but thrown together. It's wrought with mispunctuation, incorrect tense, and a lot of general terms like they're just going to maintaining or level approved when we're talking about the funds that need to be deposited with the city. I feel that it was just, I feel that it's a good thing for the city. I don't view me as a Negative Nancy up here. I just think that, as, I'm also a civil engineer, but as I bring plans to the city, there's been many times that they want us to define certain things in certain ways, and I can understand that and I respect that. And all I'm asking for is that the same care be given to these provisions, because this is something that we have to live with moving forward. And as other developers and other people look at our community, part of their due diligence will be to look at what our municipal code states. And if a document is hard to read, they may get an inappropriate or inaccurate evaluation of what our city stands for and how we operate our city. One of the questions I have, as it mentioned earlier, Attorney Coling, is that what about telecommunications? Is Consolidated and Century Link also going to be part of that? And what is also, what is the fee structures? It talks about that many times in there, and usually that fee, kind of fee structure. In working with the DOT, there's a pretty defined fee structure on most things. If you do this, it needs to be that, or if you don't do that, it needs to be that. And so, that's the types of things that I expected to see in this document that were not there. And pardon me if I came in partway through the dance, I saw it on TV for the last meeting and felt compelled to come down and at least voice my opinion on it. I would like to see the council table it and not move forward with it until these, it's gone over again. It seems like a great first try, but it seems like it needs some refining, and that's what I would ask, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. I think the city engineer and the city attorney would welcome you redlining the areas you referred to that you didn't think were as well-written as they could be. Regarding the fee structure, what the city has done over the past several years is remove fees, fee amounts from ordinances and put them onto a fee schedule. Now, I think one of the things we could possibly do here, Mr. Coling, would be to bring forth a sample fee schedule on what you, how you would envision, you and Mr. Watson would envision this looking before we dealt with the, you know, the second reading, because I think that is a valid question, essentially, what is the fee structure going to be? So, who's next? Who else would like to speak?
Mr.?
Just come to the podium, state your name, and...
Good evening, President Johnson, members of the commission. My name's Jacob Zettel, I'm the electric superintendent with Montana Dakota Utilities. I did send a brief letter outlining a few of my concerns. Montana Dakota Utilities has many, many facilities within the city right-of-way. We perform work in the city right-of-way daily, multiple times, both aerial overhead work, which is lightly touched upon in this document, as well as the underground facility installation, facility repair, some of it emergency work, some of it new installation. And I guess, looking over our franchise, and a lot of the parameters in the franchise seem to cover a lot of the concerns, we do identify with the concerns of the city. We have been noticing some of the same issues that I believe were meant to be dealt with with this document. Just given the amount of additional work, the short timeline, and the unknown expense that it could mean to MDU and its customers, I guess we're looking for more information and possibly having some sort of consideration as a franchise holder. The fact that we've been serving Dickinson for a long time, we're here to stay. We're not here to come in and, you know, do some work, leave the community, and I think we've had a reputation that shows we have been doing quality work, and if there isn't an issue that's raised, we address it promptly and properly. So, I don't want to take up any more of your time, but if you have any questions, feel free to contact me, and we're asked now.
As a, you know, major franchise organization for the city, would you have some specific suggestions on how franchises be treated in this ordinance?
Yeah, we did meet with Mr. Watson and discuss several things. You know, we talked about some blanket permitting, maybe in regards to street lighting. We have streetlights throughout the city, maybe a blanket for certain subdivisions, maybe some sort of a simple notification and filing, rather than waiting for an approval or a return from the city and working through a dialogue. There was a lot of suggestions by Mr. Watson and ourselves that seemed reasonable. It just seemed, you know, a lot of them were kind of outside the framework of this document.
So they're not yet incorporated into this document?
No, they would not be.
But you think they should be?
Well, either incorporated into that document or a separate document for franchise holders that could deal with a franchise holder either independently or dealing with franchise holders as a group, knowing that typically those businesses are around for the long term, and, you know, the terms of the franchise also stipulate a lot of the same goals that I believe are trying to be met with the general provisions of the right-of-way permit.
Okay, I notice, Mr. Zettel, your title is Region Electric Superintendent. How large is your region?
We cover western North Dakota from about Hebron to the west, as well as eastern Montana, and a small part of northern South Dakota.
Do you, how far north do you cover in North Dakota?
To the border.
So you cover, like, Watford City and Williston?
Yes, we do.
Up in Williston, do you have a similar permit that you have to obtain to work in the right-of-way?
No, there's not a right-of-way permitting process that I'm aware of. And the city, I believe, already has an excavation permit. It looks like this will take place of that permit, but today, there are permitting processes that could address some of the issues I think we've seen.
Okay. Somebody else have questions for Mr. Zettel?
Just one. Do you use the same contractors?
The majority of the work we do ourselves with our internal Montana Dakota crews, but we do have some contractors in to meet increased demand, and we will, you know, inspect their work internally, because we know ultimately that's our project and we're responsible for it. And we have been using the same contractors for the last two or three years since they were brought on board.
That was going to be my question. You said a majority of the work in Dickinson is done by your own crews?
Well, currently, we have more internal crews than we do contract crews, so...
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and that both the gas and electric side?
Yes, the gas superintendent here as well, but yeah, that would be the case.
Okay.
The reason I ask that, when I worked for, back then it was Northwestern Val, North Century Link, we always used contractors, and those are the people that cut the cables, not our regular employees that were working under our umbrella, so, just wondering.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Who else would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance?
Good evening, Mr. President, commissioners. I'm Leonard Hibble. I work for Rough Rider Electric Cooperative, and I just want to echo a lot of the comments made by Jacob. Thank you for following the way. It is, as a franchise, we hold a franchise with the City of Dickinson. A lot of the language in that franchise, it lays out standards and what we have to do to operate within the city right-of-way, and also what happens if we're not compliant. We lose our franchise. So I believe that's a pretty big hammer for the City of Dickinson to have as far as our franchise operation. I guess, you know, in echoing Jacob's comments, I guess we would like to take it a step further and emphasize that that franchise is very complete, and that we'd actually like to petition for your consideration to remove the franchise utilities from the proposed ordinance.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jackson?
Is it more the process or is it the fee?
Well, the fee is a part of the process. The process sets up, and as Jacob had alluded to, is it's all about time. Everybody's busy. If we have an additional, and the franchise lays out a different set of stipulations than the proposed ordinance as far as time allotment. We have to schedule, we have to schedule with the city, we have to schedule our people. There's a lot, it's a big time factor and scheduling factor. And it's a, if we can control, if we can try to control our world as much as we can, and it just adds another element in there that's out of our control, is the city's staff, you know, what their time, what their availability is.
Okay, the other thing I'm a little bit puzzled about, I thought I heard Mr. Watson say that this was going to replace, this permit is going to replace the excavation permit, or did I misunderstand that?
No, you did not. There may be some excavation taking place without permits, I'm not sure, but what this permit really does, as again I say, it allows the city to control what's being done in our right-of-way. For instance, you know, and here we've had MDU, and now we have Rough Rider up here saying that they have all this construction in our right-of-way, but we really don't know what they're doing in our right-of-way, and we don't know when. We can waive the fee, that's not really a problem, but we would really like to know what they're putting in our right-of-way and when they're doing that. And right now, we don't have a handle on that. What these franchise utilities can do is they just come in our right-of-way and do whatever they please whenever they want to, and we really don't know what they're doing.
So the franchise entities do not have to file a permit application, an excavation permit application currently?
That's true. So we really don't have eyes on what they're doing or what's going on in the right-of-way. And by their own admission, they have all this construction going in our right-of-way, and we don't know what it is and where it is and what's going on. So I think this is a good opportunity for the city to determine where all these facilities are going within our right-of-way.
Have we had issues with the franchises? Have they not held up their end of the bargain? Have they gone into the streets and made changes, and then we've had to come back? And correct, have they created incidents that we've had to follow up on?
Not that I know of. Really, as you all know, I'm a new, kind of a newcomer here, so I'm not familiar with any issues that we're having with the franchise folks. And I'm not indicating that we have had, but, and we discussed, and I discussed this with MDU. What I am saying is that we wouldn't know if the franchise folks did a trench that failed or not, because we don't know what they're doing. If we have a failed trench right now, we don't know who dug the trench, because we don't have a handle on who's digging in the right-of-way. So we wouldn't be able to come back on anybody within our right-of-way, for the most part, because we don't know who did that. As far as franchises go, we're all willing to waive the fees for franchise, and we understand that that could be a big issue, because they do have a lot of activities going on in the right-of-way. But we still really need to know what they're putting in our property and when they're doing it. And it would be a great thing for us to be able to observe their construction in our right-of-way, specifically under the roadways, just like any other contractor. Again, I'm not saying that the franchise have poor construction or any of that, but by their own admission, they're only doing part of their work, or the majority of their work. They still have other contractors that are working in our right-of-way that should, and we should have oversight of the construction on our property.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Is there others from the public that'd like to comment regarding this issue? Anybody else? Okay, if there's no one else, then we'll declare the... Okay, if there's no one else, then we'll declare the public hearing closed, and invite additional comments from city commissioners or city staff.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm not sure what was being discussed about the fee schedule earlier. As far as I know, the fee schedule was already arranged between Mr. Coling and I. If we're really talking about the necessary accounts that would be opened up for us to pay our inspection team, then that fee is going to be highly variable depending on the size of the permit. We could have a subdivision the size of Westridge come in and get a permit, and that fee would be a whole lot more than it would be for someone to come in and get a water and sewer tap.
Why are you talking now, the right-of-way permits here? Is that what you're talking?
Well, when a contractor comes in to get a permit, he will pay a fee to have that permit processed in the city, and that would be a flat fee. Right now, it's proposed that that fee would be $500, and that would be just a processing fee for us to take that information from the application and put it into our system so that we can track that from the beginning clear through to the final acceptance of that construction. As part of the permit fee, then the contractor would also necessarily need to put on account with the city a sum equal to that amount necessary to pay our inspection team to go out and observe their construction so that it's installed properly in accordance with the good practices of construction and civil engineering. And that account would have to be maintained until the construction was finished and accepted. Any amount in that account at the end of the construction would be given back to the contractor. And that amount that, the opening amount is highly dependent on the size of the construction activity. So I really don't, I'm not sure that we can put a schedule together regarding that particular account size. Generally, I would say it would be less than 10% of the construction cost.
So are, when you use the word permit, you're using that in a generic sense? That's for all permits related to construction, or are we just talking this right-of-way permit?
Again, the right-of-way permit covers the installation of sidewalks. It covers the installation of paving, including concrete and asphalt. It covers temporary access into the right-of-way. It covers street cuts for water and sewer. It covers basically everything that anyone would ever want to do on our property.
Okay, and currently, do we have multiple permits to do those kinds of things?
We do. We issue a concrete permit. We issue an excavation permit. However, that excavation permit is issued for all developments, and it covers excavation on private property as well as in our right-of-way. So it's very difficult for us to determine when they're excavating in our right-of-way, because it also, that same permit covers excavation on private property. So when we issue an excavation permit, they can go out and dig a foundation for a house or a commercial building one day, but then three weeks later, they might want to do the excavation to do the water and sewer taps. So we need to separate that excavation permit out from when they're going to do the excavation on the private property, because we're not really so concerned what they're doing on the private property, because that's really not ours. What we're really concerned is protecting our infrastructure and our, and construction within our right-of-way. And don't get me wrong, we're still concerned about construction on private property, but we're really concerned about what they're doing in our right-of-way.
So in our right-of-way, if they had a, had the right-of-way permit, they could do such things as a sidewalk, they could put curb and gutter in, they could do the paving, they could tie into the water and sewer lines, and that would all be authorized by this permit?
That's correct. Now, obviously, and I think you mentioned it, Mr. President, that there probably are bugs that's going to be, needed to be worked out in the first phases of this permit. And as we discussed, as the gentleman discussed earlier, yes, this really did have a short fuse on it. We really did kind of put this together very quickly. Personally, I'm not aware of any issues in the English that went in there, but maybe so. But the issue is here, we really need to act on this quickly, especially right now during the construction season, when all this construction is going in on, in our right-of-way.
Let me ask you another question. This would probably have more to do with those that hold a significant franchise with the city. You know, you've said repeatedly, you know, the city needs to know. Could we have a system where essentially they email us and tell us where they're going to be if permit fees for the franchise holders are not a big deal?
Well, I don't know. We could look at that, I guess, but it's really important for us to get this all into the GIS. And that's another reason that we really need some kind of paper trail. All this, all these facilities that are being installed in the right-of-way are not necessarily on our GIS system. And we're moving forward, and we hope to be bringing a contract with you very soon to update our GIS system. We've already, you've already approved the LiDAR fly, and that's going to be an improvement to the GIS. We have a new aerial photography going into the GIS, and we also are going to have a, with your approval, we will have a company come in and clean up the GIS, so it, and then we'll put it on the web so that it's accessible to everyone. But these kind of, this kind of information, especially those constructions that are happening, particularly by the franchise folks that are doing most of the construction in the right-of-way, needs to be included in, on the GIS. Not only the developments, but basically everything that's going in to the right-of-way.
Well, we'll come back to this topic here in a little while. We have four other timetable items, and since the public hearing part of this has been closed, I'll complete the other four timetable items, then we'll come back and pick up on this discussion. We have a 510. This is a public hearing regarding a rezoning petition. Mr. Catan, I think this is your item to introduce.
That is correct, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Johnson, President Johnson and Commissioners. This is a rezoning request from General Commercial to Downtown Commercial for the property situated at the northwest corner of Third Avenue West in Villard, the former Saks Motor Building. Planning Commission and city staff recommend approval contingent upon the one condition that's attached. There are no changes from the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Catan. Since this is a proposed ordinance, we would ask, if there's anyone from the public, we invite you to come and give your comments now regarding this issue. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? If there's no one from the public that wishes to comment regarding ordinance 1515, any comments by city commissioners or city staff?
I'll make a motion to approve second reading, final passage of ordinance number 1515.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Along with this issue, there is a renaissance zone application. Mr. Catan?
That is correct, Mr. President. This is a five-year request for property tax exemption as part of the renaissance zone for the former Saks Motors Building at 312 West Villard Street. They are proposing on rehabbing the building to make it a mixed use of commercial on the bottom and then residential on top. This is consistent with the company, it's a plan, and then also it's the Planning and Zoning Commission, city staff recommend approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Catan. Is there a resolution number, Mr. Coling?
Mr. President, this will be Resolution 24-2013.
Okay. You've heard the introduction, and the resolution is in your packet. Any comments or questions by the city commission?
I'll move that we approve the resolution for renaissance zone application, 24-2013.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. The 515 is a public hearing regarding the South Park easement vacation. This was tabled from the previous meeting, so at this time, we'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to comment regarding this issue may do so now. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? If there's no one from the public, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. I'm not sure, Mr. Catan or Mr. Coling, if you have any introductory remarks that you'd like to make?
Mr. President, I can make some introductory remarks. As you mentioned, this matter was tabled from the last city commission meeting due to a concern about weed control on the property immediately south of this, this South Park First Edition. The property with the weed control is, weed control problem is part of the larger South Park development. However, we were able to verify that the owner of this parcel, South Park First Edition, is a different property owner than the party that owns the remainder of South Park, the South Park development, south of this property. The property with the weed control problem on it does have a preliminary plat that was granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, it is outside of city weed control jurisdiction. It's not part of city limits at this point. So it would be my recommendation to you that the weed control problem not prevent this matter from going forward for vacation of an easement on this particular property. I believe the weed control issue will have to be handled by a different jurisdiction in order to get control of that particular issue. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Coling. This is resolution number what?
I'm sorry, this will be Resolution 25-2013.
Okay, you've heard Mr. Coling's report and recommendation. Any comments or questions by city commission?
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Move to approve Resolution 25-2013.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, and then we'll vote on the matter. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. 520, we are to hear a report from the Southwest Water Authority. Mary Massett is here to give that report. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. First, I'd like to extend a great thanks to President Johnson. Last week, North Dakota Water Education Foundation was in Dickinson for the executive briefing and water tour, and it was oil impacts in southwest North Dakota. And I'm used to calling you mayor, is that okay?
Just sir would be fine too, so.
Okay. Sir was, came to the event and did an outstanding job, and the public, we had water interests from throughout the state, and you did really well, so thank you. Presented our region well. We appreciate that. So we had over 150 people from around all of North Dakota to hear about the water issues in our region. And I guess I'm here today also to report about an incident that happened last week. Monday night, power was down at the intake on Renner Bay. We also lost power at the Dodge pump station. We lost a tower at the Dodge pump station. We also had some damage to the Halliday reservoir, which would not directly impact Dickinson, but our customers up in that region. And power was probably out about 7:00 PM. It was restored by about 4:00, 4:30 PM on Tuesday afternoon at the intake. We don't have generators currently at that location, but we do at Dodge. We did get power back about 7:30 PM on Tuesday night. We had a crane go up to Dodge, our Dodge pump station. We got that back in service Tuesday evening. We also had divers and staff on site at the Halliday tank and had that cleaned and inspected and filling by Wednesday morning. So we had a few issues to deal with, and that was water conservation. I guess the biggest thing would be shutting down industrial sales. We tend to find that when you ask individuals to conserve water, they tend to do the opposite. But I would like to especially thank Rough Rider Electric and their staff for their hard work and efforts, and my staff. We had people out till 2:00 in the morning at least, and they did an outstanding job, and emergency management was very helpful. So if there's questions on that issue, I'd be glad to answer them.
Well, I know that was a severe weather event that caused this to go down, but for that roughly 20, 24 hours, was there no raw water flowing at all towards Dickinson, or did you have some flowing and?
We shut down, we did have water flowing. We just couldn't pump from the intake or Dodge. Once we're up at our raw waters, reservoirs north of that by the treatment plant up there, we can free-flow water hydraulically, so we're able to do that. Our tanks were full. We shut down treatment for the OMND treatment plant because we had adequate water there and treated water 24/7, so everyone else would have drinking water in our region.
I guess so. If we had had a major fire during that timeframe where we'd had to put, you know, continuous water on a structure for three or four hours, what would have happened?
I think under the circumstances, they were kind of ideal. We would have been all right, but if it would have extended too much longer, it may have been an issue.
Could have been an issue then.
Yes. People were, everyone was cooperative, communities were cooperative, and we're just thankful that really nobody was out of water. We didn't really need to ration water. We just asked for general conservation, not to water lawns and not to wash cars, and that was lifted within 24 hours.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, and then water use. I just happened to be visiting with the city administrator and let him know that about two weeks ago, Dickinson already had a peak day of 5.75 million gallons. Capacity is about six for Dickinson. I believe we can fulfill the needs and we can pump beyond that over a 24-hour basis. However, just to make you aware that we're kind of getting to that point. And actually, looking at water usage, Dickinson is below projections year-to-date. You were above projections or above usage for the first three months of the year, and the last three months were actually down in usage. And I'm sure it's due to the wet weather, but when it gets hot and dry out, usage peaks. And with all the construction going on, that's also happening, so to make you aware of that.
Now, in our comprehensive plan, the engineers wrote in there that they projected that we would exceed the $6 million daily usage point in 2014. I guess the fact that we hit 5.75 here a couple of weeks ago probably validates their projection for next year that we're likely to, our peak, if we had a non-limited supply, would likely be above 6 million.
That's correct.
So we, as a community, we probably have to be prepared for water rationing during the month of July. That's usually the peak month.
July or August are usually hot and dry.
Okay.
I think that, you know, working collaboratively, we will not have issues. Best-case scenario.
Best case, but that's if you find that you can allocate more than six million gallons to Dickinson on any one day.
Correct. And I believe over a twenty-four hour period, we can do that.
You can do that, okay.
But just to make everybody aware that it's happening and it's growing and.
But water, you know, your additional water treatment capacity isn't scheduled to come online until two thousand seventeen.
That's correct, too.
So even if we make it through two thousand fourteen, and if we continue to have the kinds of growth that we've been experiencing, we're likely to have issues in two thousand fifteen and sixteen.
That's possible. Depending on storage, too, if Dickinson gets additional storage. And we are planning to bid our second intake on August first, so we are moving forward with that rather quickly.
And when would that likely be functioning?
Probably summer of two thousand fifteen.
And I think we've issued at least one engineering task order for one million, one tank of a million gallon capacity, and may have issued two. Have we issued a task order? I know it's on, we've got them on our list of those twenty-seven, twenty-eight projects.
Mr. President and commission, we have not issued a task order for those yet.
We have not.
Those are still waiting for developments.
I'd highly urge you to do so.
Well, I mean, they.
Just as a major fire event, for example, when the Elks Building burned, we went down and started treating water and as fast as we could to keep the city in water so they could fight the fire.
Well, I know that's a concern. If we have a major fire, then, and we have to, again, pour water on it for an extended period of time, we run the risk of draining our tanks.
We do. Emergency management was helpful. There's a possibility we could get a string of generators to run a pump up at the intake. We'd also stay in business twenty-four seven here. And as a very last resort, I guess the line to Patterson Lake is still functioning, although that would not be an ideal situation.
Well, it just sounds to me like, you know, the city needs to have a contingency plan regarding water usage during our peak months for at least the next probably two or three years.
I think so, that'd be, yes, that'd be a good idea, sir.
What else do you have for us?
It's my understanding you approved the M O U, and we are, so thank you for that. We are moving forward with the engineering on the finished water pumping station, and I believe we'll probably be bidding that this fall, and I think that'll be a big help for the city and the Southwest Pipeline Project. Completion date, I'm not sure on that one. Fourteen, fifteen, somewhere in that timeframe. So I think that'll be beneficial, too, for all concerned.
Anybody else have comments or questions for Ms. Massett? Okay, well, keep the supply of water.
We'll do our best, thank you. Thanks for allowing me to be here, and thanks again for your help last week.
You're welcome. The next item we have regards the Matheson plant noise issue, and I think there's supposed to be a Mr. Wilson from Matheson. He's here, okay. And I know we have a full house here, just by a show of hands, how many people are here to, regarding this noise issue? Okay, quite a few people then, so, Mr. Wilson, why don't you come to the podium and please introduce yourself, and we'll hear your presentation regarding this noise issue.
Okay, my name is Steve Wilson. I'm the project manager for the Matheson site on the south, south side of town. And I'm here to, I've spoke to Mr. Corton a couple of times, and we are very sensitive to this noise issue. But to, for the commission and the, and for the people to understand, our process is an air separation unit, and we're going through a testing and commissioning of this air separation unit. When we go through this, we have to blow a lot of lines out because we're using a high-volume air. We are testing the noise limits, and we do admit that we are pushing the upper limits of your ordinance, residential and the zoning of the light industrial. But in, that's not good enough for us. We are spending extra money, and we just had silencers. We've identified the three areas that we have extra noise that is coming from our facility. We have engineered, and I just issued about four days ago, the purchase order to have vent silencers put on these particular vents that will take care of this. But this is a highly unusual situation. When we're up and, up and running, and this plant is in full operation, these vent silencers wouldn't even be necessary. But we do recognize that we are going through an unusual process because this process involves a lot of testing, there's a lot of equipment associated with it, and for us to get through it, this is just the nature of this process. And so we, again, since July the first, we have been taking readings, noise level readings, from within our facility and also to the nearest residential area. And we do see that we are pushing the upper limits of your ordinance, and we are. We need about, according to the vendor, as I spoke to him today for these silencers, about another two to three weeks to be able to completely remedy this problem during this commissioning phase. Possibly, we could get up and have full production where this is not an issue at all anyway, but we are sensitive to this. We're not here to be annoyance. We want to be into the community. And, and, you know, Matheson is here to stay, so we'll do whatever it takes to fix this.
So your expectation is that once you're up and running and you're through the testing and commissioning phase, the noise will not be an issue?
That is correct, sir. We have about seventeen to eighteen around the country of these facilities, so we're very, I mean, we know how these things work. So, yes, even without these silencers, that is correct.
This is not a new design, new plant that you haven't had experience with?
What is new about this one that is different from the other seventeen, eighteen that we have is we've integrated three different processes into one, and we've, and by doing that, we've actually put these processes, because of the nature of this area getting extremely cold, we normally don't put these particular processes indoors, and we've done that. And what that has caused us to look at is we can't vent some of this stuff inside, so we have to take it outside. And that's where we've identified these three extra problems that we normally don't run into.
And that'll be about two or three weeks before these?
Vent silencers.
Vent silencers will be here?
Yes, sir. They, when I spoke to them today, they had told me three to five weeks. I, we explained to them that we would pay the extra cost for expediting them, and they said they could get it down to two to three weeks. And Mr. Corton has asked me about possibly, can we test during the day and then shut it down in the evening? The problem with that is that we're dealing with extreme cold temperatures, and once we start the process from going from ambient temperature to minus three hundred and twenty degrees, we can't just shut that off. We have to continue on to get through that in order to make the process work. It's very unfortunate, it just, it is the nature of it.
Can you delay your, your testing?
Until such time.
I mean, you're inconveniencing a lot of people.
Well, we, we're already three months behind because of weather and stuff like that. We have a lot of clients here that are beating our doors down also. I guess anything like that is possible, we would rather not. We'd rather be able to, to come to, again, we think we're right up against the upper limits of the testing of the, of your ordinance. You know, we have documentation since the first of July, but again, we don't want to be up against the upper limits. We want to remedy this problem, and that's what we're trying to do.
Mr., what is the decibel level now?
It depends on where you're taking it. But right now, up against our nearest landowner beside us, which would be to the south, we're about seventy-nine to eighty dB.
And with the silencers on, you?
Of the silencers, according to the documentation I have here from the vendor, it would be about eighty dB, three foot away.
And how far, what would that be to the nearest residence?
Oh, not, well, to the nearest landowner, that would probably be three hundred feet, three hundred and fifty feet.
But what would the decibel level be once you get the silencers on at that distance?
I would venture to say forty-five to fifty, what normal traffic would be. The normal, we got a baseline of everything while we were shut down, and the normal decibel for that area is about fifty-one to fifty-two with us completely shut down. That's just highway traffic, that's just truck, that's just normal traffic.
And if the silencers don't work?
Sir, the silencers will work. They, we've had, we paid a lot of money to have these engineered so that they know the size of our lots, they know what we're trying, we're up against, and they will work.
I don't know what forty-five decibels sounds like, or how loud that is, but it'll be interesting.
Normal speaking is forty-five to fifty decibels. Although I've, some people are louder, and some people are softer, but normal is in the fifty-decibel range.
I don't think you're familiar with Commissioner Steiner. He has a well-known hearing problem, and anything below eighty, he doesn't hear, so.
I'd be okay in that neighborhood, but.
But we would welcome anyone on the commission, any of the, the community, stop by, and we'll show you what we're doing, we'll explain to you, and, you know, we want to be your neighbor, not, we don't want to be the enemy.
Well, I think we, we understand that. I think the city's had a good working relationship with the Matheson people from the time this project was conceptualized. I would guess the concern of the people here in the room is, one, that this wouldn't be ongoing, that for the operating, operation of the plant, it wouldn't make that kind of noise. I would guess another concern is, what can you do in the interim to reduce it to a more tolerable level? And if they can be pretty much assured that in two to three weeks, it goes away.
I think we're at the minimum that we can turn the plant down and still be testing and commissioning. We're limited by turning it down. I mean, we have a main air compressor that has a characteristic that it cannot be turned down, but so far, so we're at the lowest point that we can turn our process down. But in saying that, I can assure you in two to three weeks, when we get these silencers, this, or that we can get into the production mode that we're not venting, this goes away.
And how's, I mean, what's your most optimistic projection for?
I'm going to go with the two to three, two to three weeks.
So we're likely to get the silencers before you get into production mode?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Other questions, comments?
I just have a question. Where do you live, Mr. Wilson?
I live in Des Moines, Iowa.
So you're not here in this neighborhood where we're getting all the complaints from?
I am, actually, we have a, a place that four of my colleagues are staying in Heartland Village, and then the plant manager is Nick Peterson. He lives, I'd say, five, six blocks away, and then we have an employee that lives probably less than a block away.
And what feedback are you getting from them?
I can let Nick speak for himself. I did speak to the gentleman that we hired here recently, and he doesn't, he, he can hear it, but it's not a nuisance to him. I mean, it is a noise, but he, it's not a nuisance to him.
I can put up with my own oil well, pump for noise, too, but I couldn't put up with my neighbors.
Sure.
Well, twenty-four hours a day, that's, that prevents people, working people, regular people, any, any person from sleeping, too. That's the complaint I'm getting, is the night noise.
They, you know, and I can appreciate that, I certainly can. Being in this industry for as long as I have, thirty-seven years, I certainly can appreciate that. So even though I'm not living here, I have dealt with it, and I have lived near it. But again, in taking, you know, the baseline that we did of fifty-some decimals, we were at the nearest residential area, and the highest dB reading that we got from our facility was fifty-six. So from our, from our facility to the residential area, it's not a whole lot, and if a truck came by, it went a lot higher than what we were projecting from our plant. And, and this is, and this is not making excuses, this just is the fact. I think it's something different. I think it's a noise that it could be annoying, obviously, to say the least. But from a standpoint of the ordinance, I think we're right up against the upper limits of it, as we speak.
Two to three weeks seems a long time yet, because I know this has been going on for, the first complaint I got was, I think, about three weeks ago.
We've had some, and I, when I spoke to Ed, we did have some situations where we have toned it down based on the telephone conversations with Ed. But this is as normal and as low as we can turn it down as we speak right now, and we've considered, it's considerably come down. I mean, we're within, we feel the upper limits of, of the ordinance.
Do they have, in your other plants, did you have, or do you have buffers in front of your buildings or beside them?
They're in a lot of different areas. We have some out in the middle of nowhere that sound is never an issue, so you don't spend the extra money. We have some that, in this instance, it's a lot like here, but most of the time, we identify the problems, if there is a problem, and we deal with it in different ways. There have been walls that have been put up in certain areas when the residential area is above us, so it's handled in a lot of different ways. In this case, we feel that these vent silencers for these three particular vents will remedy the problem. You know, we have documentation showing, you know, how drastic the DBs, the levels will be dropped. And again, this is, this will remedy the problem for what we're going through right now. Under normal startup conditions, once the plant is cold, once the plant is doing what it's supposed to do, this noise goes away anyway. These level of noises go away anyway.
Is there anything that you could do on a temporary basis, you know, to put a wall of some sort in place, or anything that would just deflect that noise?
I mean, we set up on a hill. I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's feasible to put up a wall of any kind. I mean, some of our vents are thirty-five foot tall. So, you know, I don't think that would be feasible.
They're, they're not just sitting there above the ground, they're.
Yeah, yes.
Mr. President, I would like to hear from some of the individuals out there, if they're, if they can be more tolerant for the next two to three weeks for this, to see if this works. I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Is there anything else that you have to tell us, Mr. Wilson?
No, I just, all I can say is, you know, please bear with us a couple more weeks. If that's not the case, we'll do what we need to do. But we can't turn our process down any more than we have right now, without completely shutting it off, which is not beneficial to, to us or anyone. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wilson. All right, thank you, Mr. Wilson. The neighborhood group, do you have a spokesperson, or persons that, informally or formally?
Hi, my name is Kathy Murphy, my husband and I live at seven-seven-seven, Third Avenue Southeast. We have lived in our home for twenty-seven years. Never in my wildest dreams would have thought that we would be here to listen to the noise behind our home. I cannot describe to any of you what we are listening to on the south side. We used to enjoy our quiet time in our backyard after hard day's work. Not anymore, as the noise is so annoying, and our quiet time has been robbed from us. When we try to go to sleep, especially me, because I'm, it is impossible due to the noise, I've tried to block the noise out and have cotton stuffed in my ears for some relief, and it, I just can't sleep. After a frustrating day of listening to the noise, my husband and I drove up to the site, because we wanted to check it out, and it was so horrible that our dog and our vehicle cowered and crawled under the seat, because she couldn't stand the noise, and we had to roll up the windows. There's no way I could work at that industrial park, I don't know how anybody could work next to that, because it is just, it breaks your eardrums practically. And with all due respect, I invite you, like him, to come down, and you sit in my, our backyard, and it's terrible. And he said, two to three weeks, it would get better, we've been hearing that for a long time, two to three weeks, two to three weeks. Friday night, it start, it's been going all night long, from Friday night, all the way till this morning, when I let the dog out at six AM, it was bad, and I don't know if my, my house is in the path of it, but it's, I can't describe to you how horrible it is. And we have lived there for twenty-seven years, like I said, and I don't think it's fair, and I don't think anybody's neighborhood should have to put up with that. So, thank you.
I guess I'm the unofficial spokesman, I've been there for thirty-four years, and we work in the body shop right next to it, I own Legend Auto Body, and I think their noise mainly comes from...
Excuse me, for those who might be viewing this later, can you just state your name?
Oh, Jerry Gata.
Thank you, Mr. Gata.
And the noise comes from, like he said, it's on a hill, and it's high on a hill, and they're, the compressor stations are all on this side of where all the housing is at, so it's like a big amphitheater where we're at, we hear it mainly straight to the west of where that plant is at. So, I guess, what my thought is, forty-five decibels, I don't know what that is either, but if eighty is not that bad to you, I don't know, forty-five, eighty is terrible to us, forty-five may not be a lot better, but maybe it is. I guess, right now, where I'm at, it doesn't bother me that much at night, but I can hear it, and I'm sure those that are three or four blocks to that east of me hear it a lot more. But, I can live with it for three or five weeks, but some people maybe can't. I want to know that it's not going to be like this every night for the, you know, how long, for long I'm going to be there.
You know, just to interrupt, I did a quick search, and your typical dishwasher, built-in dishwasher operates at fifty decibels, is a good rule of thumb, depending on the model, between fifty and fifty-six, and so, if the vents that you put in place were going to dissipate that to three feet, that would certainly, you know, everybody would be in agreement that that would be a huge difference. If you're three feet away from your dishwasher when it's running, tolerable, but where it's unbridled right now, and, and when you're looking at two to three weeks of what's been a very short summer this year, and a very short time to enjoy your backyard and your outdoor activities and your life, you know, summer's short enough in North Dakota, but to have it disrupted is, you know, even worse. I commend you that you could put up with it for two to three weeks if it was going to be resolved. I don't know that everybody behind you feels that same way.
Yeah, some are closer than me, by a lot, I mean, they're four blocks closer than I am, but it's been going on since about the tenth of June, I think, when they must have first started it. It was on and off, but it's been going steadily since, for July third, I think. I guess I'm okay with it, as long as I know that it's not going to be like that forever. I don't want to hear it in the future, every day and every night when I'm outside, is my only thought.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners, my name is Perry Basleg, and my wife and I, Annette, live at two-twenty-five Seventh Street Southeast. Our residence is approximately seven blocks due west of the plant. If you look at the map, the plant, it's almost like you have a full view going to the east, coming right out of Seventh, as was described earlier. Excuse me. At times, depending on wind direction, I think Seventh Street Southeast acts as a tunnel, just to bring that noise level all the way down. At times, it is tolerable, most times, it is not, in my opinion, of course, that differs with all of us. One question that I would have for Mr. Wilson is, you stated earlier that your baseline monitoring started at a decibel level of forty-five to fifty, and I think, and I think all in this room would say that's probably already an elevated level, just given the development that's gone on. So that being said, you can understand why those of us that live with it find it intolerable at the level that is. I would go on record to urge the commission to have them cease operations until such time they can get the dampening on it and complete their processes at the time. Thank you.
Mr. President, Commissioners, I'm Jerry Vance, I live at three-twenty-five A Street Southeast. Some of the comments I was hearing here, I'm kind of curious who's actually taking these readings. If you look at the county, I believe, from an article they just had in the paper, had eighty to ninety decibel reading, is classified as a nuisance. The federal end of it, under the work environments, this is eighty-five decibels. Again, you know, some of the comments about the decibels that's there is that they're coming from the companies trying to get this business online. And another question, I guess, is kind of related to the business, most people are asking what they're actually going to be producing off of this facility. That's pretty much what I wanted to do, and if you look at the prolonged exposure, timeline is a major thing with that. The longer that you're exposed to a noise, the more chance you have for hearing loss, and once you do have hearing loss, it is permanent. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to comment?
I'd like to address his question.
Yeah, please, Mr. Wilson, come, come back, and there's probably two or three questions there.
Well, yeah, what we're producing is...
Mr. Wilson, yeah, because it's being filmed, you have to speak into the mic, and I know your audience is behind you, but...
Yeah. What we're producing is, we're taking, the air is our raw product, and we are producing high purity oxygen and nitrogen. We're an FDA-regulated facility, which means we sell our product as a medical grade for human consumption. And we do, we separate the air, that's, that's what our product is. And as far as the noise of the eighty, you know, we, obviously, within our compressor building in our facility, we all wear earplugs, it's, it's just the, that's the nature of this business, but the eighty decibels that we're referring to is your ordinance to our next neighbor. Commercial, I mean, light industrial. Residential, it's, I think it's sixty-five, if I'm not mistaken, at certain times. That's, and we are the ones that are taking the readings, is we are sensitive to this noise level. We have calibrated readings, we're taking them twenty-four hours a day, and we're taking them at least six times in twenty-four hours.
Mr. Corton, does the city even have an instrument that we can read noise?
Yes, we do. Now, it's based directly upon this complaint that I received. About four weeks ago, I started receiving complaints, I started calling up different companies to get noise meters, and fortunately, it took some time to do so. Last Thursday, I finally received our noise meter, and then subsequent to that, I went out and measured the site. From the site itself, I can just give you some of the noise readings that I've had, in front of the site, which would be the direct line, direct line in front of the plant, I had readings of seventy-six to eighty, which are very, very high levels. That was on Thursday, and then I spoke to Mr. Wilson later that day about those readings, and then on Friday, I went to the residential areas and measured off of Sixth Avenue, and the readings there were fifty-five to fifty-eight. We have two provisions in our code that talks about noise levels. The zoning code that Mr. Wilson's referring to is a more relaxed section. Today, I found in Section twenty-four of our municipal code, the one that the police department uses, that I wasn't aware of, it is a more stringent standard, and the application is actually more stringent as well. In residential zones, that would include R1, 2, 3, and also PUDs. The maximum decibel reading from seven AM to eleven would be fifty-three decibels, significantly lower. And then, at the nighttime readings, from eleven to seven, that is actually fifty. And that is, within a industrial zone, the readings are, are higher, so we have conflicting parts of, of two sections of the code that have different readings. Like any other code that you have, whenever you have conflicting sides of the code, you always pick the more stringent of the two. That being said, the noise readings that I have been able to take care of, and I calibrated each and every time, it's a very simple process, and I made sure that the meter and the calibrator that I got was one that was simple, easy to read, because I wanted to make sure that every time that we do it, it could, it could be done consistently. And, and those readings were, were higher than the ones that we've had. So every time I've been able to measure it from the residential areas, it has exceeded the areas, and I'm very cognizant of trying to pick the, between the cars and the rest, trying to pick the quietest time in order to, to do it, and I do it at several areas, and I've noted that within it. So, at their current levels, that they're running now, their lowest levels, as Mr. Wilson has talked about, they exceed, they exceed our decibel readings. The question is today, is how you want to proceed with that. Do you want us to pursue per our, our code to enforce that regulations and go through that process, or, or do you want us to have some leniency during this period of time? And that's the reason I asked Mr. Wilson to come here tonight, to present his case to you and get direction from the city commission. But only until recently did I have a noise, noise meter in order for us to measure that, and I had spoken to Attorney Coling about it, I mean, we felt that it was exceeding it based upon the complaints and just average, this average awareness of that, and until we had a noise reader, a noise meter, I couldn't make that determination. Mr. President?
Mr. Corton, if we, if we enforce the code, what is the process, how long, can we do that immediately, or is it involve mailing time, I mean, is it going to be two or three weeks anyway?
The code it reads is essentially notifying them, so I could do a meter reading, document that, and then bring it to the plant, and give it to an employee, they have been notified of that. Then, from there, and I'll let Attorney Coling address it if I'm missing, missing the gaps, and from there, we could start prosecuting the case, get it put on the docket to be heard, it has to go through court in order to be enforced. The penalty in our, in the section of code is twenty-four, is Chapter twenty-four, and for Mr. Wilson, if you like, I have this for you, this is an additional section, if you want to have that for your records. The, we would need to enforce that, and then ultimately, a judge would have to make the call, but it's a thousand dollars a day, and then there's an additional provision for, for jail time up to thirty days for a misdemeanor, or whatever. But that's per every, every offense, so technically, I could do that every single day until the meter readings have been brought down. And what I'm trying to do is, is get direction from the commission on how we want to pursue that. I'm very cognizant of, many of the people in the back I've spoken to or have met personally, I'm frustrated, I understand it, I understand the operation, but then again, the people in the south are really bearing the burden for the problem that they're having at the plant, and I think that that's unjust.
Mr. President, can I address Mr. Corton?
I have the same code in front of me, and there is a section in here, twenty-four-twelve dot oh-four-oh-sixty exemptions, and we are under construction and testing, which is exempt.
The exemption referred to is for construction and maintenance activities, I believe we're doing testing here, I would not consider that a construction or maintenance activity, building has been built.
Well, I encourage you to come out and see the construction that's still, still going on. How we terminate, terminology, I'm not sure, but we are still under construction, it is testing, it is ma, it's all of that. But, we're doing everything we can to remedy this, that's all I can say about it.
Well, I'd like to ask a question in that regard, you, it sounds like you've been involved with a number of plants like this.
Yes, sir.
So you knew that you'd have eighty decibel sound before you started?
No, sir. Not at this, not at this particular facility, because of the three integrations of the processes we brought together, we couldn't identify them. We have, if you came to our facility, we have probably five or six silencers that are easily to identify by engineering in the process. These particular three that are causing the nuisance was not able to be identified until these three processors were put together in a functional testing.
So you don't have this issue on other facilities?
Not, not to this nature, no. I mean, we've had sound issues, but we address them, and, which is what I'm trying to do now.
Can you tell me once again, why did you combine all these in one, do you have any other things?
Supply and demand, we have a market here, and we have, Matheson has these facilities that were not being used, we retrofitted them, we rebuilt them, and we moved them here because of the industry, because of the new hospital going in, because of the oil field business.
But you didn't do any testing on what the noise level would be, prior?
All the testing and engineering that we could possibly do, yes, was done, because these three processes were individualized to start with. So all of the silencers that were bought for those three processes were done, they were engineered up front. However, in bringing these three processes together, we didn't find this until now.
My concern is the property owners, not only the, what do we want to use, the word of suffering in the meantime, losing hearing loss, the lack of sleep, it's also their property values. You can't sell a property in that area right now, I can guarantee you.
Well, I, I'm very sympathetic to that, I don't, I mean, we're doing what we can, I don't think, even based on the, the readings that Mr. Corton got, I don't think anybody, I mean, none of the residents, although being annoying, is suffering hearl, hearing loss from our facility.
Maybe not right now, but over a period of time.
I've been in the business for thirty-seven years, and I protect myself when I'm at the plant, I don't expect the residents to do so, but I have, I don't suffer any hearing loss.
So can you guarantee these people that are here, in three weeks, this is going to go away?
I can guarantee that we will be within the acceptable limits that's set forth on your ordinance, yes. Yes.
Mr. Wilson, you mentioned that you live in Des Moines, and that's, I mean, that's a nice community.
Mm-hmm.
I think a factor here in our community is we live in the Bakken.
Yes.
And there's nothing else going on in the United States like the Bakken. And for the last three or four years, we, and currently do, we live with excessive traffic, more road construction than we normally have lived with. Many of our people are working harder than they've ever worked. The first lady that was up and testified is actually, works here in City Hall, we're carrying a tremendous workload. We have frustrated contractors... We have frustrated contractors because the city can't process its building permit requests on time. The city is managing more building permits than the city of Fargo, which is six, seven, eight times the size as we are. The city has, under its own construction, for its own projects, either under construction in engineering or under evaluation, at least a hundred and sixty million dollars' worth of projects. We're overworked. We're frustrated. We're tired. And, you know, if this, if your factory or plant was here for reasons other than the Bakken, and there was no Bakken, this probably would be a little more tolerable. But for those of us who live in the Bakken, it's, well, it can be frustrating at times. There's lots of opportunity here, and you're up here to take advantage of that opportunity. But I guess I would suggest to you, really, I know you want to get going, and there are economic reasons for you to do so, but there are also plenty of good reasons for you maybe to step back and delay your process a little longer until you have the proper noise control in place. Because you're asking our residents, our community, to put up with just that much more additional frustrations on top of what is already very frustrating. We're trying to accommodate many of our new neighbors from all over the country, whether they're from Idaho, or Oklahoma, or Des Moines, but there's a limit. And I think you, your company is inadvertently, I know you didn't do this deliberately, but inadvertently, not only testing our limits, but probably exceeding them. And I think, I would suggest to you, you step back and see if there's something else you can do. You know, if you were saying that we can do this for, it'll be another four, five, six days, I think everybody in here would say they would tough it out. But if they've already been toughing it out for four weeks, and it's going to be another three weeks, it's a pretty frustrating time.
I can appreciate that, and I didn't come in here, you know, I didn't want to come in and say, "Three or four days, and it would take another two or three weeks." I wanted to give you the facts as I have them.
Well, most of us have been doing this job for quite some time up here. Almost all of our meetings, we look at empty blue chairs, you know? And so when the chairs fill up, you know, it's usually for a pretty good reason. And again, I would, I would like to see you and your management team step back. I know it would, there's some economic considerations on your part, but I think the Bakken is going to be here for a long time, and all the development that goes with that. I think you're going to do very well up here, whether you actually start right today or start three weeks from today, and I'd like you to consider that.
Absolutely. I'll take that back to the powers that be, and as soon as I leave here, and I will discuss that.
I think, I think we would all appreciate that, and we want to be a good whole city for your business, and I know you want to be a good neighbor.
Sure.
I think this would be an opportunity for you to start, you know?
Okay. I appreciate everyone's time. Thanks.
Thank you. Is it okay if we move on? Also, Mr. Vance?
Mr. President, light up some of the stuff that they were discussing on ordinances. Also, North Dakota statutes, forty-two dash zero-one, zero-one, does give the definition of nuisance. A nuisance consists of unlawfully act to do or admit a performance of duty which act or omission, whether, number one, annoys, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, or safety of others, fans decency; number three, unlawfully interferes with obstruction intended to obstruct, renders dangerous for passage in a lake, yavah, river, bay stream, canal, basin, public park, square, street, or highway; or, number four, in any way renders other persons insecure in life or use of property. I've got a few copies, if you'd like those for that.
You can leave a copy with Mr. Coling, and...
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
I would, I would like to see Mr. Wilson back to us in three days with a favorable recommendation from his company. If we don't hear from him, I would recommend that Mr. Don issue the citation, and I think at that point in time, I think those silencers might get here sooner than two to three weeks out. My assumption.
Well, I think...
I think we've got to have a point in time for these people, not two to three weeks. I think three days, we have to hear back from Mr. Wilson.
I think I heard Mr. Wilson say he was going to go back to his management and discuss this issue with them, and do you think you could be back to us in a matter of a handful of days?
Absolutely. I can let you know what the management says. As far as two to three weeks of getting it expedited, sir, money was not an issue to try to get it expedited. It's a matter of manufacturing these silencers. They don't have money, so... But I will be back to you in two to three days.
Well, I, yeah, I doubt that you could get the silencers any quicker than what you indicated, especially if they told you five weeks to begin with, and, but I think what you're hearing here is, three more weeks of this is not acceptable.
That is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, and...
Is another week acceptable?
And what would happen, why don't you come back to the mic, so it gets recorded? So you asked, is another week acceptable? What are you thinking right now?
What I'm thinking is to go back to management, and in another week, we could possibly be at a point where, if we shut down and waited the rest of the time, wouldn't, wouldn't put us back as far as what would happen if we shut down, say, tomorrow. It would put us along at a point where it doesn't make us backtrack, but one week.
If we had a general consensus for a week, you would shut it down after a week and wait for the silencers?
Yes. That, I would take that, I would propose that to my management, and I could come back before the Commission and let them know, but that's what I would go back, that's my plan to go back to upper management.
Well, I think what the Commission would really like, we only meet every two weeks, so it'll be two weeks from now when we meet. If we had a general consensus that you had one more week of this, and then you shut down regardless of where you're at, we would want you to do that. I would not want to sit through a meeting two weeks from now where that hadn't happened, because then we would have standing room only, and we would have, you know, we'd have, it just wouldn't be a good scene. We don't want to do that.
No, no. I can agree to that.
By a show of hands in the audience, if you can live with another week, would you put your hand up? There are no hands up.
You know, the issue is that they are in violation, and if it was a police issue because your neighbors were throwing a party and having loud music, the cops wouldn't listen to the neighbor saying, "Well, the party's going to end in three more hours. If you just let us keep partying for three more hours, then we promise we'll shut the music down and dispense with the people." You're in violation. You have people that are living with the violation. You've had the complaints. If it was any other type of violation, the police were involved, the noise violation would be shut down right away and remedied on the spot.
Is that what, I mean, is that what this would end up in? Is you telling us that we shut down? If you find us in violation, I mean, you just tell us that we shut down?
Well, I'll let Commissioner Coling talk about that. For me, in the code, I don't, I thought that we had the ability, after consultation with Attorney Coling, I don't have, we don't have that ability directly to do that. The only thing that I can do is find, is recommend a fine up to a hundred, I mean, up to a thousand dollars a day, and then get it prosecuted, put on the docket for, to be heard as quickly as possible. And then from there, a judge would determine if he's going to keep the maximum at that or reduce it. That's the, that's the procedure that I would have to go through unless Commissioner Coling has another avenue for us to pursue.
Mr. President, Commissioners, we can't pursue a court order to have the process shut down. The readings that Mr. Corton has obtained with his decibel meter indicate that the property's in violation, and if we need to secure a court order to shut them down, we can do so. We can put that before the judge and have that matter argued. We would rather not have to do that.
Neither would we.
We would rather have the property owner here come into compliance with the code without having to enforce it through a court order. But if we need to do so, we can.
I think if this has been going on for three, four weeks, you've kind of used up your grace period, and I would talk to your management and see if you, we can remedy this quickly, and without your attorney talking to our attorney and all that, and then all the things we said about being good neighbors are, you know?
I totally understand, and we don't want that either.
So, can you call me sometime tomorrow?
Absolutely.
And tell me what...
All I need is your number.
I have a card.
I may not have the savings. Would you please just say that?
You can, yes, you can call my cell number in the evening, you can call my direct line during the day, just don't hand that out to any of my neighbors here, okay?
Okay.
So, we'll do that.
I will speak to you as we leave, yes.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Now we'll go on, okay? All right, we're going to go back to talking about right-of-way permit ordinances. And, Mr. Watson, we kind of interrupted you. I don't know if we interrupted you right in the middle of a thought or not, but did you have some additional other comments you wanted to make on the right-of-way ordinance?
Mr. President, Commissioner, I really think this is imperative for the city to get a handle on what construction is going on in the right-of-way, and when it's going on, and for us to have some kind of oversight for that construction in an effort to protect our city infrastructure. And as I had mentioned, we may have been in discussions of the fee schedule, and I'm not sure what the individual that was speaking to that really intended, but as I was trying to get across here is that our, the, our construction inspection team fee will vary according to the size of the construction project. And as I indicated, I don't think that that, their fee is going to exceed ten percent of the construction costs, and certainly, we can be part of that discussion with our inspection team. However, again, I say that, and if we're really looking for a fee schedule, then I submit that, for that inspection process, I mean, I submit that it's probably going to be a percentage of the construction cost, because that's really the only way that we can set up a fee, a, an inspection fee for the, that the city can support.
I think from our contractor's perspective, especially those that are doing work, say, on fixed contract prices, they have to have an idea of what those fees are so they can put them into their price and tell their, you know, their clients, you know, "This is what your building's going to cost, inclusive of all, you know, fees and other costs."
And I can certainly appreciate that, and to be honest with you, I haven't had this discussion with the intended inspection team, and I have set up a meeting this afternoon with the, with our consultant, who is intended to do these inspections, and certainly, we can discuss that and make that a part of the right-of-way permit process.
You know, right now, we have a lot of frustrated builders, because they're waiting on building permits and certificates of occupancy and things of that nature. My concern is, we're, in our attempt to make things better, we're going to make them more frustrated.
I hope not. Again, I say this process replaces a process that's already in place. Admittedly, the previous process may have been easier for the contracting folks, but it was more difficult for those of us in the city that have to maintain those and keep track of the records that, of those individual things that are, I mean, the constructions that are going in the right-of-way. Those are the, that being said, that's only true for those contractors who bother to get a permit. As you know, there's contractors that don't bother to even get a permit, and I think we alluded to that when, during our discussions with the franchise folks. So, I had a meeting with MDU, and I discussed options that we could try to resolve any issues that they might have, and of course, that would be true for any of the other franchises. But I just don't think that eliminating the need for us to know what is going on and when is, and that is going on in the right-of-way is the proper path. I really believe that this type of permit is really necessary, and if you go online and search for right-of-way permit, you can, you'll go through pages and pages and pages of big, both large and small entities and agencies across the United States that require exactly that, a right-of-way permit, and it's really termed a right-of-way permit. You can go through twenty or thirty pages in Google and not get out of a right-of-way permit. So this is not a new idea.
Well, it may not be a new idea, but it's a new idea to Dickinson, right?
And in those agreements, those are for franchisees as well? It's for everyone?
It's for everyone. And the whole idea is to understand and control the construction that is occurring on our property. And I think, Mr. President, you alluded to it last commission meeting, how would, how would we all feel if there were a contractor in our backyard digging a trench without our knowledge around our kids? I don't think any of us would be satisfied with that. And it just, and it's the same thing within our right-of-way. Right-of-way is the city property, and we should, we need to know what's going on there.
And I think, I think, you know, the concept makes sense, and you've shared some new information tonight with, that this would actually replace some of the other permits, and I think that would, that would be a good thing. But I think it's also frustrating for our construction community that, I mean, they're waiting on so many things from the city, and it may not all be city delays. I understand that, that there's various qualities of engineering documents and submittals that come in, but they're waiting, for whatever the reasons, and so there's a, there's a pretty high frustration level out there right now. I can tell just by the number of calls I get, and... I can tell just by the number of calls I get in, in, in my history as being mayor, I don't get a lot of calls. So when I'm getting the kind of calls and emails that I'm getting today, the frustration level's pretty high. Actually, I'm hearing more about this issue than I'm hearing about the noise issue. So my concern would be, you know, we're going to make this change at the same time we have, you know, issues yet in getting up to speed where we can handle the extreme workload that we're dealing with.
I guess to, to balance off of that too, you know, this is an important and a sweeping change, probably one that needs to take place, but we're doing it at the peak of our construction season too. So we're making a sweeping change that affects franchisees and, um, people in construction right at the peak of construction season. Wouldn't we be better vested to put this in place but have it take effect January 1st? Time where, you know, construction is slowed down, we have time to implement it, gives us some time to nu, fix all of, you know, the issues that were brought up. And then we have a timetable where people are aware that this is coming online and it's taking effect. I picked January 1st just out of the hat, I don't care what date, but somewhere other than the peak of construction season to make a sweeping change like this.
And I, I'm not being critical of you, Mr. Watson. I, I know you've only been here a short time and you walked into a storm and we have a storm here and... But is this, is this, as Mr. Altman has just said, is this the right time to be doing this at, at peak construction?
It's true that we're making a lot of changes here and that all those changes are necessary in order to get the storm settled down. If we don't make some kind of an effort to determine what's going in the right-of-way, then all of the construction that's going to happen between now and the end of the construction season will be lost. So again, we won't know what all the franchisees are putting in the right-of-way and those things will be lost.
What do you do with that information once you know it?
It'll be put in the G I S.
And what, once it's in the G I S, what does that mean to us?
Then that will be made out to, then that, for, uh, Mr. Zurov will know where all those lines are and we'll be able to identify any issues, all the water and sewer connections will be identified and so he'll know what he has to maintain.
So without that info, without that information or without this permit, it's not now getting into our G I S system?
That's correct. So, uh, yeah, we could operate without this permit until January 1st and, and really this permit does not have to go into effect, it's all, it's really up to the commission. But this, again, we're issuing excavation permits currently that allows the contractors to dig both on and out of the right-of-way. So we have no control over when they're going to dig and we don't know where they're digging and so it really has become a problem. And I have to say that the engineering staff realizes that there's a lot of stress out there in the, in the contracting arena. And there's an equal amount of stress in the engineering department. So we're really trying to partner, uh, with these folks and try to make it easier for everyone. And I mentioned this in our conversations that I had with M D U. So I, I mean, it, it's really not something that we have, have to take a tough stand on. I mean, the process, as we indicated before, can be changed as we go along. But it's really necessary for us to know what's going in our right-of-way. For instance, you know, as I discussed with M D U the other day, I had a, during discussions for the railroad grade separation, I talked with, uh, the new folks down at the pharmacy at, that was going to be taken without, prior to discussions and he, the, the gentleman has installed a drive-through pharmacy window. Well, we're going to be taking away his left-turning access into his drive-through and currently he can't get anybody, uh, northbound into his, uh, drive-through because M D U placed a utility pole in the way. Well, if we had a right-of-way permit, we would have been able to evaluate the location of that, uh, utility pole so it wouldn't interfere with his operation of that drive-through. We have, uh, locations of utility poles going in all over the city where we have no evaluation possible. There's utility poles being placed, uh, in the radius returns throughout the city where we eventually are going to have to put ADA ramps. So we're going to have to have those utility poles moved in order to accommodate the law for us to put ADA ramps in. So there's, it's more than just a convenience for the city to know what's going on in our right-of-way.
Mr. President, um, no, I can't imagine anybody would argue with the concept that we need to know what's going on in our right-of-way. I certainly don't. And I can't imagine anybody does. When we first talked about this permit four weeks ago, my first concern was, geez, one more permit. I think I'm hearing tonight that it's not one more permit. They're going to eliminate permits? I want to make sure I'm understanding that.
Currently, we issue a paving permit for someone to put sidewalk in.
And we'll eliminate that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Every, anything that goes on in the right-of-way will be identified within the right-of-way permit. It includes curb and gutter, driveway cuts, all of these kind of, uh, road closures, uh, those kind of things that are going to happen in the right-of-way would be covered by a right-of-way permit.
Okay, that, you know, that makes me feel better that we're going to eliminate permits so our bureaucracy doesn't grow hopefully. Um, after that, I just hope we're doing this to facilitate construction and facilitate development. I know we have to know, but I hope that everything we're doing, we're doing to get things built in this community as best we can and still do it right, do it according to our codes, do it with good quality. We want all that. But I, I just hope we all have an attitude that we got to get some things built because we do, we need to. Lastly, the thing I'm hearing tonight that does concern me a little bit, and I'm not sure I fully understand it, but, um, I didn't think the fees would be as big an issue as ma, I'm getting a feeling maybe they will be. Would we expect, say, in the case of M D U, would we expect to have a person following that work? The consultant that we'll be hiring?
They will have a con, they, any, um, any franchise, agree, any franchisee will have a contractor. And, uh, that contractor should, um, be overseen during the process of constructing something in our right-of-way. Now...
Contractor, I'm not sure I understand.
Well, either the franchisee, either the franchisee himself or they're their self or they will have a subconsultant doing the con, doing the work in our right-of-way.
Okay, what will we be doing though?
We would be following along with our inspection team, inspecting what they're doing in our right-of-way. So yes, they would be required to have an account with the city to pay for that inspection fee.
That's, that's the part that's concerning me now is I...
So we would have a separate account for every contractor that takes out a permit?
Yes.
And so our administrative staff would have to keep track of that and either ask for more money if it's short or rebate money if they deposited too much?
No, actually, the, uh, inspection team will be monitoring the accounts and that will all be handled. It's being proposed, being handled by, uh, A T C.
A T, who's the?
American Trust Center.
We would subcontract that out, in other words?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be much simpler if there were, the fee was the fee and whether it turned out to be long or short, we just live with it rather than go through the administrative hassle?
I don't have an answer for that.
I mean, in a sense, that's what we do with fees now, permits. I mean, we don't, if, people pay their permit fee and we don't keep track of whether it covered all the costs or didn't cover all the costs. We just, if in total it seems like the permit fees are covering the city's added expenses, we're fine with it. I, I mean, I, we must deal with, uh, quite a large number of contractors that would be in our right-of-way.
Yes. We sent some 600 letters out.
Yeah, and so you're going to have, okay, 600 possible contractors with multiple projects and you're going to keep track of fees on a per-project basis per contractor.
That's what's proposed, yes.
Yeah.
And the issue, I think, is with, um, rolling those inspection fees into the process fee is that in some cases you're, the city would fall quite a bit short and end up paying our consultant, um, out of other revenues that didn't really have anything to do with the construction.
But there will be a cost, Mr. Watson, to that kind of record-keeping. So if the, if the fee structure, uh, gives us a better estimate, you know, closer estimate of what the actual costs are, then if the city comes out reasonably close in total, I don't think it's, it's a big deal because there is a cost to the record-keeping.
That's true, but for instance, a larger project is going to require more inspection fees.
So, but I mean, we're going to do the same thing for a small project as we do a larger project?
That's right, but the fees of the inspection fees obviously would be smaller.
In, in my engineering days, which, not much of an engineer, but I learned about A B C inventory, where you put your, most of your controls into your A items, which were your big expensive items and the least amount of controls into the C items. And why wouldn't we do that here with the big projects? Maybe we do treat them for separate accounts, but the small projects, we're not going to go into that kind of bookkeeping. We're just going to charge a, a fee and that's it.
We could do it that way. The, the whole issue being is that all the trenches, especially the trenches that are cut in the street, there's just actually been no eyes on the backfilling process, the compaction tests that are occurring and, and really that's going to, that's, those are the most damaging to the city infrastructure.
And I don't think you're getting pushback on that here. I mean, I, I, I think we understand the need for permitting in the right-of-way, especially if it'll, um, uh, reduce other permits and can, in a sense consolidate permits into this one process. But, uh, it might not make a lot of sense to treat everything the same as this, as if it were a major project. I mean, there is a, it's, it's the law of diminishing returns. Now, Mr. Coons, like, we closed the public hearing, but, uh, we'll reopen it just for you, okay? So what are you, what's on your mind?
Kyle, Builders, I just have a couple of comments and questions. I, I do agree the, the getting the control of the right-of-way, I think that is a good thing. I'm not arguing with that. With the city-owned utilities, there is inspections done on that already and stuff like that. I think one of the challenges and some of the frustrating parts of it is how you set up the procedure, how you call for an inspection 48 hours in advance. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but hearing the fee and the, put the money aside, you get something going, you call for an inspection, that inspector shows up, you're not ready for him, you push him out another 48, you know, you, when it's a tab, the meter's running. If they show up, if you're ready or not, is that going to be a charge? If you have to have them come back a second time, is that another charge? There's unknowns, un, you know, um, unpredictables. So that's the challenge and then, as busy as we all are, we don't work four and a half days a week anymore, five, we're working six days a week. When can we get those inspections? So now we can, things can get spread out in a hurry and that's where some of the frustration can come in. You call in on a Friday to get an inspection on Tuesday, you know, so, and I don't know where the conversation's going, it's definitely with the, the other utilities, but the city-owned utilities, we already have to have inspections when we go on the right-of-way. So I, I know he's trying to clean it up, I do like the right-of-way, getting control of that, but for me, it's the user-friendly part of it and can you handle having enough boots on the ground to, to get a, a take of it all? So I guess that's my part, I wasn't really prepared for it, but it's, three weeks can happen and you don't get anywhere, so trying to make it user-friendly, I guess.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coons. It, it depends.
Would you have to live in the city?
Just 20 seconds. I agree with, with Kyle on the...
You got to tell us your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Neil Messer, Continental Royal State and Schwab Messer Builders. Uh, I agree with the concept here, but I think the devil is in the details here. We're talking about a 10% fee to cover these things, okay? So if I go and develop the street and my costs for underground, water, sewer, curb, gutter, everything, right now, I'm budgeting 400, 450 a lineal foot to do that. Are you saying that there's another 10%, 40 to 45 bucks for, per foot to inspect those, to do that inspection, to get that project done? That's, you know, I think that's, that's absorbent. Number two, if I have a typical 85, uh, foot with lot, okay? I think the things that we're talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, would be potentially if I go into the street for water and sewer. If I go and cut the curb to, to make provisions for the driveway and if I come in and pour the public sidewalk, okay? If I do all those things on a typical 85-foot lot, that cost could be anywhere from $6,000 to $8,000. They're saying right now that that's a $6,000 to $800 fee to inspect and do that when right now my cost to the city would probably be in the, you know, probably around 100 bucks to do that? I, I think that needs to be looked at. If, if you want to inspect it, that's fine, but again, you're going to have all these things where, define the, the criteria for an inspection of a, of a public sidewalk, you know, and that kind of stuff. So the underground stuff, I think, is very valid, but these, these, these details are going to be really killing the contractors and, and we want to talk about affordable housing and make affordable housing, uh, prevalent. This doesn't help.
In the end, it gets passed on to the buyer, the whole...
It has to, so, thanks. Sorry.
Is there anybody else from the public that wants to comment? Okay, well, we'll close the public hearing again, all right?
If I might.
Yes.
Um, one of the issues now, as I think we all at the city understand, is that this city is, is pretty well understaffed. And right now, uh, the engineering department has one half of one person that's doing all the inspections within the city right-of-way. So that's where we stand on having eyes on, on what's going on in the city right-of-way. So while, uh, it's been mentioned that we do have inspections on, on city infrastructure, no, we really don't because there's, our, uh, city engineering staff is just not available to go out and look at everything that's being put in regardless of what's been said. We don't, we don't watch any of the testing or any of the backfilling to, to, so, I'm just saying that we need some, we need some more eyes on what's going on in the right-of-way.
Well, I, I, we heard, uh, Mr. Coling's, uh, H R report, um, hours ago and, uh, he pretty much said the city is short personnel in almost every department, some more than Um, I think we have a couple of items, uh, here in a few minutes where we're going to deal with and, and probably improve, approving some contracts that are going to help you to outsource some of those functions. So I understand it.
That's correct. That's correct, and I'd be glad to speak to those when they come up.
And, and I want to get to those shortly, but I don't want to put words in the mouth of my fellow commissioners, so I'll just, I'll just speak for myself. I, I think the right-of-way thing is a good thing, and I think you've, you've, you've got the right concept. I'm not sure that we have enough detail here to pass a second reading. I mean, if you put this on the agenda for next time with just the way it's written, I don't, I don't think it's going to be unanimous, you know, unless, if it passes, I don't think it'd be unanimous. I think we need more detail, more, a better understanding of, of how this is going to work. And I don't think, I don't think we're opposed to the direction you're going, but there has to be a little more detail, in my view.
Mr. President, to me, I, I agree. I, I think we need the right of way, I think they need, they recommend the right-of-way permit and so on. To me, it comes down to time and cost. If we can address those, I don't think we have an issue with, with the contractors. If we can settle out the time it takes to get this here to them and the cost, then I think we have a passable ordinance.
I think so too, and I think we definitely have to address the franchisee side of it too, because that's going to be a sweeping change for several major employers of how they do their day-to-day business. If you look back at the history, and they have all been independent and, and held accountable within their own corporation to go in and do the job and, and come back from it, and now we're going to be monitoring that, that's fine, but that's a sweeping change for those franchisees, and so they need to be able to implement it, and that's why, you know, I would look at the timing of it too, and how do we treat the, the franchise side of this.
I just have one question for Mr. Watson. How did we get here? Was it because we had so many individual permits that they weren't inputted to the GIS, or?
Well, part of the, part of the reason we're here is that we've got failing streets, that the contractors aren't being respons, some of the contractors there are not being responsible contractors, and they're installing infrastructure that we're going to have to accept, that is not going to be new infrastructure when we accept it, because it was inadequately installed. That's part of the reason we're here, because we really, again, I keep hating to have, have to say this, is we just really need to know what's going on out there. And we need to have them constructed according to good practices of civil engineering. So, that's part of the reason. Another part of the reason is that we're way overstressed and overworked in the, in the engineering and community development departments, and we need, we're, we're just trying to streamline, and whether it seems like it's streamlined or not, this is, in my opinion, going to be a streamlining process that may seem like it's adding additional delay, but as we've talked to tonight, this is a replacement. This will replace the issuance of some permits that, numerous permits, that are currently issued now. And so if we can get these all onto one permit, then in my estimate, this, this will be, as I said before, this is a good thing for the city, and it should be a good thing for the contractors. Yes, they are going to have to pay to have their work inspected, and this is not anything new for construction in any city that you go to. Usually, many cities have their own inspection teams. In this city, we don't have our own inspection teams, we're going to outsource that. And so the contractors are going to necessarily have to pay, pay the, the burden of that inspection process.
I think that I know what street issues, Mr. Watson, or some of the street issues Mr. Watson's referring to, and it's an abomination for our city, and we really do need to get control of that, and, and I think this will really help get control of those kinds of things. My, my gut is telling me that we're maybe trying to be a little bit too broad-brush in this. Maybe we need to customize things a little bit more, and you maybe are, and maybe I'm not getting the picture, or we aren't getting the picture, but I do think it's worth working on it a little bit more. We, we, we need to do this, we need to do it, but I think we can be a little more comfortable with a couple of things, hopefully.
So, I think you should look at the ordinance, consider what we heard tonight in testimony, the comments here, and, and see if you can improve on it.
Mr. President, if I could say, you know, I think it is right to remove the fees from the ordinance like we do with most of our fees, I think that's, that's right. But in this case, it might be good to look at a fee schedule as were, you know, a proposed, a draft fee schedule as we're passing this ordinance. It might help us understand the ordinance better.
May I? By fee schedule, do we mean a processing fee, or are we discussing the accounts that will be necessary for us to pay our inspection team? That's what, I can't, and there's a difference, because we need a fee in place for our administration people to pay for, for them to enter all of this data into our system, but then we also need a fee to pay for the actual inspection process.
That's the part that's still fuzzy to me.
The latter?
I wasn't here two weeks ago, so maybe the rest of you understand it better than I do, but I, I think you need to put that on paper for us, both fees, both, both sides of the fee.
Okay.
So we can understand it. And understanding that you may change the numbers when we memorialize it, but at least an idea to look at.
Okay.
If you, if you have a model city where this is already in place and working, I think it would help for us to see maybe what, what is written into their code.
I'll try to find one.
Well, I mean, you know, one that's, one that might be a, a good peer for us. Now, having said that, there's nothing quite like the BAC and, and the growth that the communities in the BAC are, are experiencing. So I, if we have contractors in the room who want to go back to the way things used to be, we're not going back there, we can't. It's because things won't be the way they used to be, probably, for quite some time.
I really think that Dickinson is a special community. We don't, on, on the city staff, we don't have the city staff necessary to do the inspection, so what we're doing is outsourcing that, and, and probably rightfully so, so that in a few years, when the development slows down and the construction slows down, then we won't have that staff onboard that we'll have to let go. We can simply let our consultant contract go. And honestly, I don't know of another city that has this special condition, where we're just really targeting for the next few years, this major construction boom. And honestly, I've never been involved in this type of a construction boom, so really, this is kind of all-new arena for me as well.
I think it is for all of us. I mean, there would be very few people who would say that they've kind of lived through something like this. I mean, this isn't, the first time that this has occurred anyplace in the world, but it is something that occurs on a seldom basis, I guess.
Interestingly enough, our consulting team that we intend to have the, do the inspection process also has the Public Works Director, who was in charge of the big boom in Gillette. So, I'm sure that he can provide some input and, and some guidance on how we can improve the ordinance. So I will set up a meeting with that firm immediately and see if I can come to some understanding on, and some ideas on, to, so that you could better understand where we're going.
Okay. Well, I think we'll move on, if that's okay with everybody else. Okay. Mr. Coling, is there anything you want to say about those thank-you notes, or can we read them ourselves?
You can read those, them yourselves, Mr. President, those are just there for your information.
Okay. So then we'll move to public safety, and we'll hear the report from the Fire Department, Chief Seavock.
President Johnson, Commissioners, tonight I'll present the activities of the Dickinson Fire Department ending in the second quarter, ending June 30, 2013. Second quarter incident response, we had 111 responses broken up, as you see, 29 alert crew responses, 31 answered by full-time personnel, as I told you at another meeting. Full-time personnel are trying to shoulder more of the burden of daytime responses, instead of calling our volunteers away from work. You see that increased number there because of that. Officer in charge handling an incident on their, on their own, 35 incidents, two general alarms, 10 night duty responses. The night duty program is something that's been in place a long, long time. We've never seen more activity with the officer in charge and the two night duty personnel answering calls instead of calling out the alert crew. And again, we judge those calls very carefully, we make sure we don't get our people in trouble in making that decision, but there you see quite an increase in the night duty response. Four special calls, those were either medical assist or, or some type of a rescue call, is what's represented there. Second quarter incident response as compared to 2011, 3, 2012, 3% over 2012, 52% over 2011. Now, that's just the second quarter, that's not a running total, including the first quarter, that's just the second quarter alone. By the end of the second quarter, 2013, we had 207 total incidents already. Fire prevention and public education, routine inspection numbers are up as are follow-ups generated by the routine inspections, 214, 170 follow-ups, 119 in construction, 13 childcare, 11 miscellaneous, which again includes fire drills and complaint investigations, tours, lectures, and demos, there was 14. Plan reviews, 69, 69 plan reviews in the second quarter. Again, this is just the second quarter, it doesn't include the first quarter numbers. Even though we're, we're doing well as far as increasing our number of inspections, because you did allow us to hire another fire inspector, we're still running 24 to 26 months out on routine inspections, properties we should be in once every 12 months, and our priority inspections, healthcare, places of assembly, educational occupancies, where we must be in there at least once every 12 months, we're three months behind on those now. The reason for that is simply because of the new stuff coming in the door, it just keeps overpowering us. Lot of stuff happened in the second quarter, Safety City, approximately 80 kids, our staff was there, spring cleanup was, again, a partnership with the Dickinson Fire Department and area businesses, Southwest Multi-County Correction Center extinguisher demo, we did some school visits at Lincoln and Jefferson, lecture on fire, fire safety for the elderly at Pioneer Haven, school tours, we had, we had Richardson schools come to us, and area homeschool students came to us also in the second quarter. National Fire Safety Campaign was again kicked off throughout the community, where donations were asked of area businesses that provide student manuals for the students in this, in our local schools. Several of our staff attended a lecture on disaster preparedness and response, that was April 30th. Todd Selly and Dusty Grosslook went to Anniston, Alabama, for 40 hours of hazmat training, and both came back with technician-level certification. That training is at absolutely no cost, including travel, absolutely no cost to the city of Dickinson. Todd is a full-time member of the department, Dusty is one of our volunteers, it's great that his, his work recognized that, and he was allowed to go to that. Tyler Scott, Hillary Hartman, attended the Fire Department Instructors Conference in Indianapolis, something that does cost us some money, but extremely, extremely beneficial and something I hope that we're able to continue. Hydrant testing, of course, took place in the second quarter due to some of the road construction, that's something that we'll be finishing up, we weren't able to finish the hydrant testing in the zones we had chose this year. And little public relations, the elephant wash for the area circus. I'm not sure who's enjoying it more, the firefighter or the elephants. State Fire Convention, we had two members receive lifetime membership, Jerry Bertle and Hillary Hartman, that's 25 years of service to the Fire Department, is recognized by lifetime membership in the North Dakota Firefighters Association. We took part in the Patriot Guard Veterans Honor, Honor Ride that they do every year. And you heard me talk again about the 4th of July breakfast that we host with the senior citizens, had some people in the parade, had a couple trucks in the parade. And again, regular training, hose nozzle, ground ladder practices, auto extrications, we keep doing that over and over again. Ropes and knots, hazmat, decon and rescue is our special operations training, trying to be concise and give you all this in a nutshell. Been very busy, third quarter has been, has been exceptionally busy. One day we had six responses, the day alone, we had three. Doesn't seem to be letting up, it would be nice if it and the heat would let up. And Commissioners, that concludes our report. That's our ladder truck at the Patriot Guard Ride that they do. That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Seavock. Are there any questions or comments for the chief? Okay. Police Department. Chief Dossinger.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. Elephant washing is a tough act to follow, but I'll see what I can do. Currently, our staffing situation, we're currently sitting at 34 officers, boots on the ground as we speak today. At one of those spots, has currently been activated in his military duty, so he is overseas. Currently, we have two job offers on the table, conditional offers, and we have one new officer that's going to be starting next week for us. Accidents for the second quarter, you can see that we had 299 accidents this quarter compared to 304 last year, very similar numbers. For the year, we're sitting at 623 crashes this year versus 610 last year, very consistent numbers. Traffic stops for the second quarter of this year, we've seen a 45% increase in the number of traffic stops that we have made. Not, not only are traffic stops important for maintaining the safety of our streets, that's really how we find out who's actually in our community, through criminal interdiction. That's when we serve the warrants, that's when we find out that the sex offenders are not currently registered, and that's a, a big tool in finding out who's actually in our community. Total traffic stops for the, for the year so far, we're sitting at 3,889 for 2013 versus 3,686 last year. Warnings and citations, during the second quarter of this year, we've seen a 40% increase in the number of citations and an 86% increase in the number of warnings that were issued. To date, 2013, there's been a little over a 4% increase in the number of citations and a 47% increase in the number of warnings that were issued. As you do know, we do have a truck regulatory traffic position. For the second quarter, that officer, Officer Peterson, was able to work 16 days dedicated to that position. He did cite six trucks who'd been overweight, fined them out for a little over $5,000 for those trucks, and he did make 30 traffic contacts in addition to laying the overweight trucks. Our second call, quarter for calls for service, fairly consistent, you can see that we've had 6,979 calls for the second quarter versus 6,118 calls the quarter, same quarter last year. This line chart definitely kind of tells a story. 2013 was kind of a mirror image of 2012, but at a lower volume, that has kind of reversed for the second quarter. The trend is kind of continuing in July, we are seeing an increase in our calls for service. Total cost for service this year, we're sitting at 12,683 for the end of the second quarter versus 12,910 for the end of the second quarter last year. Arrest numbers, very similar, the second quarter, we had 888 criminal arrests, for the second quarter last year, we had 810. We were very active for training in our second quarter, we had 33 training events, which over 70 of our officers have attended. Those, some examples of that training include active shooter, SWAT basic, human trafficking, sexual assault investigation, gang schools, patrol leadership, K-9 training and certification, domestic violence training, and high-risk traffic stops. As you do know, we do have a K-9 program, we are budgeted for two Canines in our program. As you do know, we do have a canine program, we are budgeted for two canines in our program. Recently, we had a canine that retired, a Buster. Buster was an award-winning dog in the state of North Dakota, he was a nine-year-old lab, he served over a little over seven years with us, participated in over 700 narcotic searches, and was credited with over 150 drug arrests. This is our new dog, his name is Gambit, he has a Malinois, he's a two-year-old male, he is a dual-purpose dog, not only is he a narcotic detection dog, but he also is certified in tracking and has an apprehension patrol dog. He came to us from Holland, a cost of $12,000, and Gambit was paid for us by donations made to us by area businesses. This time, I want to invite Investigator Sergeant Kylan Clauser to the podium, he's going to talk to you a little bit about the Criminal Investigative Unit and also our tactical team.
Commissioners, Mr. President, good evening. As Chief Dossinger said, this is just going to be an extension of his report and just give you a little bit of an idea on the rundown and what we're seeing in the criminal world, investigations specifically. Maybe some know, maybe some don't know, but our investigators, on a daily basis, get some of the more time-consuming cases, the things that are going to be maybe more thought invoking, just going to take a little more manpower, the follow-up that the patrol maybe won't have time for. Anyways, as you can see, it currently consists of one supervising investigator, myself, and three full-time investigators. There should be an asterisk on the slide, we are, for this quarter, we're down one full-time investigator for about a month and a half, he's been out on some sick leave, taking care of some personal stuff, so the numbers, you'll see, it's been a very, very busy quarter for the investigative unit. I haven't talked to you guys at all this year, so I threw up the first quarter numbers there, just as you could tell, as it shows, the investigative unit handled 137 cases throughout the first quarter. Second quarter, we're at 238 cases, and as Chief Dossinger's slide showed previously, that goes right in line with our total calls for service. As the weather has warmed, there has been some increased trends out there, the criminals are out and about and amok. So anyways, as you can see there along that, right now, we're sitting at about 59 and a half cases in investigator this quarter. The big one there, that it's kind of always a sleeper number because it's low, but is the call-out incidents, and this quarter, we're sitting at 10 call-outs. For you that know, maybe don't know, to talk a little bit, our call-outs are very time-consuming, those are our after-hour incidents, possibly your large assaults that we're going to respond to, maybe a liquor establishment here in town, or you know, just something, a major event after hours, it's very time-consuming for the investigators, and a lot of times we end up calling multiple investigators out to try to get everything in hand and under control. So, and those 10 call-outs are a combination of single investigator and multiple investigator call-outs. To date, we're sitting at 375 cases, about 93, 93 whatever cases per investigator, and 17 call-outs for the year. Just to put that in perspective, in my six years, six and a half years going on in investigations, when I first got into investigations, a busy year for us would have been if you touched 100 cases. And so now, we're going midway into this year and we're coming up on that triple digits, so you know, that tells you how things have progressed for us, as everybody here tonight knows, we've been talking about for the last two years in our growth. But 324 cases this year, January to June to date, last year at 284 cases, so 60 cases right in there, excuse me, 40 cases right in there, that's pretty substantial when you're talking individual cases and man-hours, that's a pretty good number for investigations. And another, like I said, the sleeper number, which I've already mentioned just briefly, is that call-out, we're 17 call-outs this year and 15, which you know, as it looks up there, it's the smallest on the graph, but in reality, that is what usually will take the largest part of our time and our responsibility. Some other areas of interest for the Commission and the community is our sex offender program that we currently run, and the investigators are responsible for the monitoring and maintenance of our sex offenders in the city of Dickinson. And to clarify that just a little bit further, we are responsible for those that are not on supervised probation, so if you are, if an offender is on supervised probation, we do not take responsibility of making sure that he is where he's supposed to be, he's working where he's supposed to be, that is his probation officer. However, in a time of assistance or when they do need help, we will step in and help them, and that does happen frequently. But we're at 39 offenders right now, that number fluctuates anywhere between 35 and 45. This quarter, we did have one arrest for failure to comply with his registration, and we had 24 face-to-face contacts this quarter for our entire 39 offenders. Now, of the 39 offenders, we have two high-risk offenders, seven medium-risk offenders, 13 low-risk offenders, and 17 unknown offenders. Now, the 17 unknown there, that, I like to throw them into the category of high-risk, because we try to treat them as a high-risk until we know further when they become, when they get into our jurisdiction. And the reason that they are unknown is because the state of North Dakota is currently behind on the portfolio review. If you get an offender in from out of state, their portfolio, from whatever state they're coming from, will get shipped to the state of North Dakota, go in front of a panel or a board, so to speak, North Dakota follows different guidelines than other states, and then that board will make the assessment on where they need to fall into as far as high, medium, or low. And so, we have not received response on 17 offenders, so you know, they're floating there, but we try to treat them as high-risk until we know otherwise by the state. This quarter, we did have one prostitution arrest that took place up here at one of our local hotel establishments. I put multiple contacts under there, I think it's just worth noting that we have had a number of contacts with our patrol and through our investigative cases with individuals that we know are in the prostitution arena, also the human trafficking arena, just no arrests were made on those. One that we're really proud of in the investigative unit is our Internet Crimes Against Children, we do have that program that operates out of the department, if you're familiar, not familiar, simply put, to catch a predator on TV, as a community may know it best, but we do have a program here that we run, that we are very proactive in. And as you can see, this quarter alone, we had three arrests, one of them were in-state, two were out-of-state. Of those two, one was actually an international arrest, I think it's worth noting, actually over in South Korea, so it tells you how far this stuff goes, and it's definitely, I mean, if you ever have a chance to sit down with our investigator who handles our program, it's, ask questions, it's extremely scary, and it's something that we are seeing an increased activity in, and nothing amazes or surprises me anymore with that, it's really awe-stracking. Tell you a little bit about where we're sitting at with our overall trend, property crimes are really, are on the up, as the weather has increased, which to an extent is to be expected. The unfortunate thing about the property crimes, they're the most time-consuming for the investigators. Most of these guys would rather be dealing with person crimes, person-on-person than these property, because there's so much, it's you know, it's tracking and the trails are so much longer with the property crimes. But a big increase with the industrial equipment and materials, storage unit thefts are on the rise. Along with this, we're also seeing an increased number in fraud cases, maybe some of you have been lucky enough to have some of those phone calls that have come in, we had a stint in about a two, three-week period where some internationals were calling and trying to sell you maybe lottery winnings or something along those lines, we had a number of those calls come in in about a two-week period. The number of cases that we're seeing that are technology-involved are, I don't have an exact number for you, but just at face value, it is extremely alarming, with the amounts of the cellphones and mobile data and social media and the means that we communicate with each other, it is something that, it's an alarming number if I had that in front of you, and I apologize for not, but it's, those are extremely time-consuming. Tracking a digital fingerprint on a case like that, we call it digital fingerprint, just because that's the digital tracking terminology, it's very time-consuming. Some of the things that we've picked up this year, maybe the Commission was aware of, maybe not, are the background investigations. Those numbers that I presented to you did not include our background investigations that we handle for the city of Dickinson, the Dickinson Police Department, our local landlords, our local, our best friends program, and Mr. Coling had talked a little bit ago about our liquor license establishments, which we now do, which in years past, the police department had not done, had not completed. And so, just to give you a little rundown, you know that we're in a constant strike to try to fill those police officer positions. One background investigation on a police officer that we conduct is anywhere between 40 and 60 man-hours for one of my investigators, so it's an extremely thorough process, extensive process, it takes a lot of time. Some of the things that we'd like to see here in the next few months, the community and those watching to pay attention for the Dickinson Police Department Facebook page, we're looking at trying to set up a cyberbullying and ICAC educational course for parents and those in the community, to try to bring them up to speed on what we're seeing and some of the things they should be paying attention to in the household. And so, like I said, we'll have that posted on our Facebook and other areas in the upcoming months. Some of the other things, we'd like to see an increase in our vice crimes arena that I just talked about a little bit ago, and that is the prostitution area, human trafficking, our warrant service. The problem has been the manpower, and as we've increased officers over the last two years, the investigative unit has maintained the same size, and Chief Dossinger has talked to me a number of different times, you know, we're looking at adding an additional investigator, hopefully the first of next year, hopefully that does take place, and that'll help us out immensely in this area. Just to give you an idea, some of you are familiar with, in January, we ran a prostitution operation out of investigative unit in conjunction with some other agencies, but you know, on a simple prostitution sting is going to take, on that instance, it takes eight individuals, and you're looking at 20 hours per person on that, so it's very much time-consuming. The classification of offense on prostitution in the state of North Dakota is a B misdemeanor, you know, similar to a DUI arrest right now, so to put that in perspective for you. And here in the next few months, we, because of our funding through the oil impact money here in North Dakota, I think we're going to be able to achieve a computer forensic position, and we're going to be able to outfit with about $35,000 from this fund to fully outfit one of our guys in the investigative unit to handle all of our computer crimes and our computer technology and things that I've talked about already for the department and hopefully assist Southwest North Dakota. Right now, we rely on BCI, the Bureau of Criminal Investigation, and so we can be independent of them, and that'll be a huge asset for our department and our community to be able to have that stuff right here for response to our citizens and their needs. Getting into the Southwest Tactical Team report for the quarter, as you see right there, 2012, eight call-outs to date, 2013, we're at three. Now, I bring this to put this in perspective as well, that can look, you know, like, wow, that's a big difference. Red River Valley Fargo SWAT, last year, they didn't have any SWAT call-outs, so if you can imagine, I mean, it's really just, you can't look at the numbers, they don't really tell the tale always when it comes to the area of tactical call-outs, so anyways, I just wanted to throw that out at you. Then, as you've seen outside, some of the Commissioners, we have the, our new Bearcat, we kind of have, we've called, that's our Thor, that's the name for the team that we use, but it's our new armored vehicle that was obtained through grants and some joint, some funds, excuse me, from other areas, and we're able to obtain that, and it's been a huge asset for us already to this point, we've conducted several trainings with it, and it's going to change the game for how we conduct business as a tactical team and our officer's safety significantly from what we had before. Also, this quarter, we were able to purchase Avatar robot, and it's about a $25,000 purchase, and this was funded through some grants we were able to obtain, and as you can see right there, there's a panoramic camera on the top of it. This robot has a lot of different applications, it's going to, I mean, we can put this thing into a house before our team gets there, let it run around, see what's going on, we have a live feed on, outside the building, so we can tell what's happening inside, it has an intercom on it where we can speak to our suspects on the inside, give them, you know, verbal commands, give them some direction, but it's going to be a huge asset to our team in the upcoming months as we proceed. This quarter, the tactical team has, you know, conducted, we conduct two trainings a month, and our trainings have been at, here at City Hall, kind of bring a smile to their face, we conducted some trainings, barricaded subjects, hostage situations with the Commission Room here, the entire building and such, some of you are familiar with a situation that, school board meeting that happened down in, I think it was in Florida, a while ago, but anyways, just kind of reenact some of those types of situations. We're incorporating both that Bearcat and the robot immediately into the training we're conducting. The Bearcat is being taken around to the agencies and the jurisdictions in the surrounding area so that they can take a look at it and kind of enjoy their, and smile and see what they were, you know, a part of bringing to Southwest North Dakota, because it really is, I mean, it's a very cool thing, as you guys have all seen it, we're excited to have it, and then, like I said, just another little note there, it's been at the Family Fun Day, we're trying to get it exposed out there so that the community knows when they see it, what's going on, it's not going to be something that, well, what's going on here, and we're getting calls into the police department on, what's this piece of equipment, who's in town, and getting everybody up to speed on that, so that's going to be my information for the night, if anybody has any questions about that or not.
Just to finish up, some upcoming events we have, we're going to be hosting the National Night Out, we're teaming up with the Dickinson Fire Department, it's going to be at the Beju Activity Center on August 8th, we're going to have educational booths, food, entertainment for the kids, and it's a great night for the community to come out and see what the Dickinson Police Department and the Dickinson Fire Department is all about. Kind of some of the past public relations events we've done, we recently sponsored the Alive at Five, although it was stormed out because of the weather, the Dickinson Police Department was down there, we did host that, we had some kid events down there. We also are doing Ticket a Kid, if there's a kid that's riding a bike, scooter, skateboard, he's wearing his helmet, our officers do stop them, issue them a ticket, and they get a free ice cream cone at the Dairy Queen. We participated in the Family Fun Day, we had our Bike Patrol team out at the Bike Patrol, and we also recently had a team compete in the Relay for Life, a strongman competition, which benefits the Relay for Life Cancer Fund, we raised over $1,500 for that, and the proceeds we won for winning the competition was donated back to them. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Sergeant and Chief, thank you very much, a very thorough report, are there any comments or questions for either of them? Again, it's pretty evident that not only is the Fire Department busy, but the Police Department's busy, the Engineering Department's busy, everybody's busy, a lot going on, thank you. Okay, we're to Tab 6, Engineering, there is a contract to consider with civil science engineer, and Mr. Coling, are you introducing that?
Mr. President and Commissioner, I'll begin, and maybe Mr. Coling can follow. This contract really is intended to and will hire a consultant engineer to help us with our development plan review process, and it should speed up our review, our plan review significantly. With that, Mr. Coling?
Mr. President, Commissioners, this is based upon a standard engineering contract that we have used in the past, includes compensation to be paid to the engineer and the standard amounts that we've used in the past. I don't believe there's anything else unusual about this contract that would merit particular attention, but city staff would recommend approval.
Mr. President, this contract is a multi-task contract, so we would be able to add tasks as necessary as moving forward.
Is it on a hourly basis?
Yes.
And generally, what will the hourly fee be?
Well, it'll be based on the 3-0 multiplier, so that it's a standard contract with an engineering firm.
How many dollars per hour does it start out at?
Mr. Coling, are you, did you bring a schedule with you?
I do not have the schedule with me, it's direct labor cost times the 3-0 multiplier, but I don't have the scheduled direct labor costs with me.
So whatever their direct labor costs are, it's times three?
Correct.
Were there any other questions?
This is specifically for subdivisions?
This, the first task order will be specifically for subdivisions, yes, and that's what this contract is really intended for. It will supplement our review process currently that Apex is accomplishing for development plan review for us, and now we're just adding another consultant to double that.
Building site plans?
Just, this will just be for the civil engineering plan review. The building plans are still being The building plans are still being reviewed by the Community Development Department. So, this will incorporate a review of the stormwater management plan and all the infrastructure, including water and sewer and the other things that we have to install in the right-of-way.
Other questions or comments?
I'll move, we approve the contract.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second, further discussion. Hearing none will vote, Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Item B is HDR construction contract. Mr. Watson, are you going to introduce that?
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioner. This contract will hire our consulting engineering firm to do the inspection of the construction within the right-of-way. That would be part of the right-of-way permit process. This also will be a multi-task contract and will allow us to contract with HDR to inspect some of our installation of infrastructure as it relates to the CIP program that we've already gone over. These, this contractor may be involved in the inspection of those, certainly will be involved in some of the other inspection processes that we have going forward here.
Okay, Mr. Coleing, anything else that you're going to add?
I don't believe so, Mr. President, no.
All right, comments or questions by Commissioners?
Mr. President, move to approve HDR construction contract?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Do you have some reports, Mr. Watson?
I do, excuse me, I do, I have a few projects I'd like to update for the Commission. The rail of great separation management presentation will be given as previously reported on July 22nd at 1:00 out of DOT headquarters. I have sent a meeting notice to Commissioner Jackson, and he is aware that, of the meeting, and I believe that he intends to attend with Sean and I. The stormwater drainage study will be kicked off this Wednesday. The LiDAR that will help us with that process will be at the, will be available at the end of July. The 12th Street West project, the NDOT, the North Dakota DOT urban project was to begin construction today, and traffic signal will be modified, I believe tomorrow, to incorporate split-phase timing so that one side of the street goes east-west before the other side of the street goes, so, and half of that street will be closed at a time, so, so that we maintain access to all the businesses on 12th Street. That was a change order that I introduced shortly after I came to work here at the city, and I believe it's in the betterment for all the businesses along 12th Street. So, all the business access will be maintained during the construction process and processes to be, through October probably. The railroad, I have, for the railroad quiet zone, I have received only one proposal from Ronnie and SRF engineers. I did go out to, with RFP process, to several firms and received only one process, or only one proposal, excuse me, and at this time, I would request concurrence from the Commission to enter negotiations for, with Ronnie and SRF engineers to start the process of developing a quiet zone ex-assessment for the city of Dickinson. Preliminary estimating, I'm preliminary estimating the, the fee would be about $30,000 for the assessment study. And we'll need this study to go forward, to get into negotiations to the right-of-way, or with the railroad, to decide how we're going to proceed with establishing the quiet zones at the various crossings in the city.
Since we went out for a request for proposals and you only have one, do you, Mr. Coleing, does he really need formal authorization from us to go ahead and enter into negotiations? Once he has negotiated, if he comes back then with a contract at that time, wouldn't we approve it or disapprove?
Mr. President, I imagine any negotiated contract we would bring before you for final approval, I believe what Mr. Watson's looking for is some sort of informal approval to go ahead with negotiations.
That's exactly what I'm looking for, is some kind of direction as to whether the Commission wishes to move forward with this process.
Does anybody oppose going forward?
No.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
I do have a question, if I could.
Sure.
You'll have to tell them which crossings we're looking at, correct?
Yes.
And which ones are those now? Are there three or four?
Actually, there's six.
Six?
Yes, and I, and I'm not sure they got them all. They, I've already had a preliminary report from them, and that was included as part of the RF, as part of their proposal, and so I've done some more checking, and I'm not sure we got them all, but I'll be in discussions with that over the negotiating process. The, I think the more expensive ones, the kinds that cost a half a million dollars are the kinds without any gates at all, and those are the spur tracks that maybe get one or two trains a day, so, but we can make all, or none, or some of them quiet, but I would think that the Commission would definitely want to look at, at providing the quiet treatment for the mainline railroad tracks.
Okay, but we are looking at the crossings to livestock yards?
Yes.
And what about west, the crossing at Game and Fish?
Yes, will be, yes, and we can look at all of the crossings. And the reason for the assessment process is to determine how much treatment we want to provide to each crossing, and they'll come, the assessment will come forward with a number of different types of treatments for each cross, for each crossing, and we can then decide what kind of dollars we want to provide for each improvement.
Okay.
So, and we can, we can assess all the crossings around the city that the Commission desires. Right now, I really believe that we shouldn't be assessing them all for future considerations on how much money we want to spend.
Thank you.
Those are the only project updates that I have. I do have some upcoming bids that I'd like to let you know about, and this is just a reiteration of what I've said before. The 18-inch water tie from the existing water tank over to 30th Avenue at 15th Street will probably bid in August. We're waiting for right-of-way from NDSU to get that started. The cost of that's going to be $900,000. The 40th Street utility project will install sanitary and sewer, 12-inch sanitary sewer and a 14-inch water main in 40th Street from about 2nd Avenue to Highway 22. That should bid in early August, and we're anticipating the construction, the cost to be $530,000. We're expecting that to be paid for by the develop, by the developer there on the northeast corner of that, of 40th Street and Highway 22. The 21st Street water main from State to the Timbers Development is an 18-inch water main and will probably be bid in early August again. The cost of $500,000 is anticipated to be borne by the Timbers Development. The West Lift Station and Force Main is set for a July bid for August construction, and that is $11,500,000. And what I really, what I'd also like to talk to you tonight about is our planned submittal on the urban road systems to the DOT for funding. We all met, the management team met and decided that our submittal for 2014 would be 21st Street, State to 30th Avenue. The 2015 submittal would be the State Avenue from 21st Street to 40th Street, and the 2016 submittal would be 21st Street, State Avenue to Highway 22. And we are planning to submit some regional system improvements for the first year in 2014, those would, that would include Highway 22 widening from Villard to Broadway, which would include the widening of the railroad underpass and treatment there too. And the second year, the 2015 submittal would be the widening of Highway 22 from Villard to the freeway. I've had some discussions with the DOT, and they're in concurrence with those primary regional submittals, and we have buy-in from the DOT. So, that is what we planned, and Mr. Kessel and all the management team have been involved in these discussions, so I invite your input quickly, if you would, if you're desirous. Our submittals are due back to the DOT by the end of this month.
Well, the hour is late, and that's, those are, that's a pretty important question that you just asked, and there was no information in the packet that told us that that was coming. And I, if it's okay with my fellow Commissioners, I would say that if you get together with Commissioner Jackson, and if he concurs with that or gets you to make some changes, I suspect it'll be okay with the other four of us. Is that okay with you, Commissioner Jackson?
It's okay with me.
Is that, I mean, we're not, we're not going to go through that tonight, but, but if, if you could find time to schedule some time with Commissioner Jackson, you can go through those, hear your rationale and stuff, if he concurs, I suspect it's fine with the rest of us.
Okay, I can do that. And that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Okay, any questions for the city engineer? All right, well, finally, Public Works, Mr. Zurov?
President Johnson, Commissioner, I have a couple items for this evening. The first is a change order for the exterior coating of the 4th Street Reservoir and the Rocky Butte Reservoir. As you can see in the memo, a lot of the items are for safety issues for both reservoirs. One of the costs that is significant is when we do these safety items, there'll be welding on the tank, so we need to then drain the tank and re-chlorinate and clean out the tanks. These were some issues that were originally looked at when we bid, but I feel they're needed, so I'm recommending approval.
And the total change order amount is, how much that you're?
$62,000.
And that's all the change orders in total?
It includes both tanks, correct.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions from Commissioners or Mr. Zurov regarding this item? It's pretty well detailed in your computers. Now, would there be a motion to approve the change orders in the amount of $62,000?
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion, the second, any discussion? Hearing none will vote, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries.
President Johnson, Commissioner, next on the agenda is the electrical service contractor with Rough Rider Electric. This is for the Public Works Building and the animal shelter. Enclosed, you have the invoices for the animal shelter Public Works Building and moving the cable for the Public Works Building. After this memo was written, I did have some more discussions with the architect, and in our specifications in the contract, the electrical engineer, electrical contractor, Burger Electric, is going to be responsible for these items. So, tonight, we just need approval for the contract itself, and there'll be, the dollars will be included in the construction contract.
So, I'm not sure I completely followed that. Is this something that is not considered an extra right now, it's already part of the original contract?
Yeah, we're bringing electrical power to the Public Works Building, and Rough Rider Electric, of course, needs a contract with the city for power. And those dollar amounts are in the invoice of $91,863 for Rough Rider to bring in power. But in our contract with the contractors, the electrical contractors, Burger, on the Public Works facility, that will be up their dollar to pay. So, that will be part of projects, so there won't be any additional funds, but we'll still need to enter, enter into contract with Rough Rider Electric.
So, we're approving, we're approving a contract with them that has no dollar amount in it?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody care to move a motion to approve that contract?
I'll move.
Second.
We have the motion, the second, any discussion? Okay, hearing done, will vote, Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries.
President Johnson, Commissioner, I'll try to be a little clearer this time.
No, you were, you were fine, I'm just getting tired.
Me too. This is the contract for the gas service to the water reclamation facility. This will be installed by Montana Dakota Utilities. The dollar amount is $223,450. The reason it is so large is we're bringing gas from basically the intersection of Energy Drive and East Villard down to the water reclamation facility. This will include boring the railroad tracks and the cost of getting it to the facility. So, I'm requesting we enter into agreement with MDU so we can have gas delivered to our facility.
So, is this part of the overall estimate, begin with the, for the whole project?
This was not, but it was known, actually, in, this isn't under the contractor agreement, but in the cost of the whole project, it was actually estimated $600,000. So, it's not in contract with the?
But we were carrying a cost for it in the overall.
Correct.
Okay, good. Okay. Would there be a motion to approve this contract in the stated amount?
Move to approve.
Chair, second?
Second.
Discussion?
Hopefully, we can recoup the fee with our right-of-way engineering coming in and inspecting since they're drilling under our streets. I'll have to go back and inspect it. Church fee.
It's too late.
Oh.
There was no, no cost for MDU to bring in power to the water reclamation facility because it will be, they will get that money back quick with the blowers and all the equipment there, so they, they're bringing in power for no cost.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second here, don't we, and any other discussion? Okay, we'll proceed to vote, Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. You have some project updates?
I do, I'll try to make them quick, President Johnson and Commissioner. First of all, we did, we earned, or wink, consultants are under contract with the city to do the landfill and collection study, so we had a kickoff meeting this week on that. The Public Works Building, the foundations and undergrounds are near completion, and they're going to start setting the precast walls this week. The fuel tank bid was accepted in the consent agenda, and that'll be ordered tomorrow, so that will be ordered and try to get on-site as soon as possible for that installation. There'll be some minor change orders with the Public Works Building due to boulders and some other items, I'll bring those, and I'm hoping to bring a presentation on August 5th for the facility. And I'm hoping to bring a presentation on August 5th for the facility. By that time, we'll have some walls up and actually be able to see something. The water reclamation facility project is on schedule, and I talked to them, we're going to have a project presentation update on August 19th. It's going to be a busy day, but I'd like to have some, something brought in. The Influent Pump Station, we, as I told you earlier, it's been, the bid has been advertised, and the bid opening will be on August 6th. The appraisal and land acquisition set us back a little bit, but we're going forward and hope to have a recommendation to bid, or for acceptance of the bid on August 19th at the Commission meeting, because we need to keep that going on a quick schedule.
Does, have you had any preliminary indication of how many bidders we might have?
I do not. I know a lot of that Influent Pump Station includes a force main from, quite a bit of force main from there to the water reclamation facility, and I know the, some of the contractors at the water reclamation facility are real interested in bidding. Quickly, the water being replacement project, of course, you can see them off Vallard. They're still working by the railroad tracks. They had some issues with fittings, but hopefully by the end of the week, they'll be out of the Vallard area, or the, on, south of Vallard on the railroad, right-of-way, they'll be out of there and then probably move to Second Street East. And the water tanks, we talked about the change order, and one thing I want to bring up is the Fourth Avenue Tank will be off this week, and they'll be flushing the lines. So, there will probably be some turbidity and color issues in the area. That concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zurov. Are there any comments or questions for the Public Works Director? Okay, well, we'll move on to community development. We have one item there, and we'll let you introduce that, Mr. Kurton.
Mr. President, Commission, this is a continuance of the July 1st meeting. At the July 1st meeting, we made a presentation for the Camp at a Heart Special Use Permit for the expansion of the existing park in order to accommodate more manufactured homes. At that meeting, the Commission continued the, the Special Use Permit in order for staff to have an opportunity to meet with the developer and tell them about the additional condition that would be proposed for city dedicated construction inspection in the right-of-way. We've notified the applicant of that, and they're in agreement. Today, the City Engineer met with the developer again and went over some, some of the conditions. And if you've noticed in, in front of you, we have, I have a revised resolution that includes three additional conditions as a result of that meeting, with one additional condition modified accordingly. And I'll just quickly summarize those, and then I could open it up if you have questions. Under number three, at the end of the sentence, under the adopting resolution, I'll read the text, including but not limited to a geotechnical investigation for the pavement of a box design. And then the three additional conditions that are attached, prior to certificate of occupancy of the tornado shelter, the developer shall construct ten community parking spaces to dissatisfaction of the City Engineer. Number 14, on-street parking shall be prohibited, and number 15, all new driveways shall be constructed with a minimum length of 25 foot, and vehicles must not block the sidewalk at any time. And with that, I conclude my presentation. If you have any questions, the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Kurton. Are there any comments or questions regarding this proposed resolution, which would approve a special use permit? It's resolution number what, Mr. Coling?
Mr. President, this will be Resolution 26-2013.
Okay.
Mr. President, move to approve Resolution 26-2013.
Second.
We have the motion, the second is our discussion. Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Kurton?
That is it for tonight.
Any issues by City Commissioners? Is there anybody from the public that wishes to address the Commission? If so, come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments.
My name is Neil Messer with Schwab Messer Construction, and I realize the hour is late, and I'm sure many of you wish I wasn't here. I kind of wish I wasn't here either, so. The word frustration was used a lot of time with contractors and builders, and I'm trying to get a sense, I know Mr. Murray made the comment, that things aren't going back to where they were, and I can appreciate that, and certainly don't have that expectation. But I'm trying to find out what a reasonable timeframe is to get some projects going and get them off the ground, and I'm going to talk to you about one. I can name numerous, like, if we had a public hearing, there'd be a lot more contractors here tonight than there was on the noise issue that you had before you previously. Were the contractors for a building for Raylong down in the KLD subdivision, and we applied for a building permit on June 12, 2012. That's 13 months ago. And during the process, of course, you get, you know, you get the plan review, but you also get the site plan review, which includes stormwater retention and that kind of stuff. And we are now on month number nine, trying to get the site plan approved. There was an original submission, took about eight or nine weeks to get the, the reply to that. The second revision was made, took another eight weeks to get back, and now the third plan has been sitting in there since about May 5th. Today's July 15, and we're, that's about 11 weeks to get a response to that. Only last week were we notified that they thought someone, someone, this correspondence was sent to the owner, so I didn't get it correctly from anybody at City Hall, but only last week were we told that the owner needed to agree to pay for the cost to have an outside review for this. Well, I'm just, and part of it, I'm just going is, well, if the first and second review were done, where are we coming on that? So, it's a frustration thing. The word has been used a number of times. I know the owner's extremely frustrated, and I know that there's, I sent a memo over earlier, where we're trying to personally do something, and we're being told we shouldn't plan on certain construction this year either. So, just bringing it to your attention, trying to figure out, how can we expedite this? I realize everybody's overwhelmed, realize everybody's overloaded, but I don't want to, I deal with, in my real estate side, I deal with companies who are trying to make a physical presence, location decision based on coming to Dickinson, Williston, Minot, Watford, or whatever. And I can tell you that there is some rumblings that, you know, it takes too long that you're building up and running if you come to Dickinson. So, I don't want to see that. As a city, we want to grow, but we want to do it right, and so I'm just trying to figure out what the reasonable right is, so. Just addressing that issue, and if there's no questions or anything, I'll walk away with it, so, thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the Commission?
Kevin Marks, 1361 Third Avenue East. I'd just like to congratulate the Commission, President Johnson, for moving forth with Gary Reddick and the downtown renovation project. I think it's an excellent idea, and I wish you luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Anybody else? Now, the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Can we just go back to Mr. Messer?
Mr. Watson, you're familiar with this project?
Not so much, but I'll try to answer.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering if we, we had an answer for him as to the reasonable amount of time that he will be able to proceed with this project.
Well, we-
Are you familiar with it?
I should be able to answer the question. We did go over this project over the weekend. As you're aware, the Assistant City Engineer is leaving us, and Nathan and I worked all weekend. Loretta was in as well to try to download his information into our brains so we could understand where we all are in not only this development, but all the other 84 developments that we're juggling right now. Towards the end of the week, we should have a schedule, at least where all the developments are in the process. I can say right now with confidence, there are some 26 developments that, whose civil plans have not been sent out for review. So, with that, I would say that Mr. Messer is not the only development in the city who is anxious to get going. I did have a meeting with-
Are those other developers and so on, are they working on over a year time from the beginning?
Well, not necessarily, but as Mr. Messer indicated, there have been several iterations of changing plans and re-review, and changing plans and re-review. And so, this goes back to what the mayor was saying previously. There are various levels of engineering quality that come through the city, and I'm not sure that this development was identified for outsourcing earlier. If I'm not mistaken, I believe Nathan did the first two reviews himself. And now, without Mr. Peck, it's impossible for us to do that in-house, and even if Mr. Peck was here, we still would be outsourcing the latest revision of this development plans. And I don't recall ever saying that he should not consider construction this year. I don't remember that, I don't remember that phrase at all in our discussions. The fact is that the Commission just approved an additional contract for us to hire another consultant to help us with this plan review. I wish I had an answer for you, how long the plan review process takes. But the, but the fact is, there is a varying quality of engineering that comes through our offices, and it, we just cannot pin down an average time that it's going to take to satisfy the conditions of a, of a stormwater plan approval, plus all the civil infrastructure that needs to be installed for services. The addition of an additional consultant should help that process. Mr., this development will be put in the, in the list as a priority, and we'll try to get it out as soon as we can. I'm into, but, again, we're hiring a new consultant, and there's going to be a learning curve for that consultant. For your information, we're having a meeting, a massive meeting tomorrow afternoon, which includes Mr. Peck, and includes both of our review consultants, to get everybody on the same page on how these reviews are supposed to occur, and maybe give me a better idea and a better handle on where they all are. So, it's, we're doing our best.
Mr. Watson, are they, the developers, given the choice at the beginning to outsource it? I know there was a fee, and we were offering that.
I'm not, I'm really not sure of what happened before I got here. When I got here, Nathan was completely overwhelmed. He couldn't even find his desk, and it got to be where he couldn't even get to his desk because of, his floor was completely covered with plans as well. So, at that time, I insisted that all the development plans be outsourced. So, there was no choice. And that happened within weeks of me coming on board, and now we've stepped up the process to include another consultant. And the, really, the bottom line is that we're understaffed. So, this kind of thing has to happen in order for us to even try to keep up. I'm, I'm hopeful this will streamline the process and we can move on, but there's going to be some catching up to do in order for us to get reorganized in the absence of an Assistant City Engineer. And we made an offer for Nathan's replacement, but it's, there's going to be a learning curve there. So, with the short staff we have in the engineering department, I think we're doing a tremendous job, even the, even the developments we get out. Plus, all the infrastructure projects we've had to prioritize and so forth, so it, I don't, we're just doing the best we can.
Mr. Stookard, I could just add to that. Prior to Engineer Watson starting, we did have that option, and it just, the tsunami overwhelmed Mr. Peck, and then it came to a point in which everything was sent out. But there was a time in which we tried to do it in-house, and with everything else, with the plating, and it just was too much, and that's where Mr. Watson was hired and made a decision to send things out.
Okay, thank you.